Good evening. Today is Thursday, September 21st, 2023, and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV, and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. Good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for accommodating the new arrangement, trying to bring everybody a little bit closer, a little bit more collaboration. So again, if you have any feedback, please do. The idea again is to try to utilize the screen in front of us for presentations. So no presentations tonight, but at least we can utilize this kind of this setup. If we have, if and when we have guests, the guests will be front and center here to us, and then the other representatives are around. So thanks again for working with me on that. First agenda item tonight is our approval of minutes. And let's see. All right. First one, first set of minutes will be from the regular meeting held on September 7th, 2023. Any discussion on those minutes? Matt?
Let me get to it. All right. So I just need a quick correction on page five. Item 11 for subcommittee updates. Paragraph line two, three, four, four down just states that Facility Subcommittee was reviewing the need for Athletic Department to work with the Parks Department to address concerns related to communication out of fields. That should, that should reflect that the discussion between Parks and the Facility Subcommittee was to start the discussion to work together on how to fix Fino Field and get that in better condition. So.
Okay.
That was the only change I had.
All right.
Can you state that again, just so I can, where, where is?
Yeah, that is page five of the nine, seven meeting minutes. Item 11.
And then the fourth paragraph down about Facilities and Parks Department.
Under A.
Under A, yes.
Yep, I got, I got it now. Perfect.
All right. So looking for a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I just have one question.
Yep, go ahead.
It's page seven. Maybe meeting with X. Is that place a little bit or something?
Sorry about that. And where are we at? Page seven?
It's the Subcommittee Update Section C.
Oh my God. My apologies. And this is the, yeah, the nine, seven meeting, right?
Melissa flagged it in her email because she just said she needed us to fill that in and then.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you remember who X is?
Subcommittee.
Okay, sorry.
I believe, I believe X was the community use. Michael was just giving the update that he was the community use that night.
Yes, X was community use.
Okay, got it.
All right, there we go. It's always good when you know variables.
Yeah, it's the first math problem I got right in a while.
Okay, any other updates? All right. So looking for a motion to accept the September 7th, 2023 regular session minutes with the corrections and updates as specified by Matt and Brendan. Motion by Matt, second by Brendan, all in favor?
I abstain from this motion.
Okay, so that's going to be four in favor and one abstention. All right. Okay, next set of minutes are going to be from the executive session on February 2nd, 2023. This is a vote to approve and to release. We pass these over, and our last one, just due to some members not being here. Obviously, let's see, should be all set. I'm gonna, I'm going to ask one of the committee members that were not there at that meeting if, you know, if they can review this, you know, and be okay with, with voting to move these forward. Obviously, myself, Meg, obviously Jen Parsons was there, and Matt, you were there. So recusing of that were, were Michael and Dr. Vratica. So I guess I'll be looking towards you. If you're comfortable with that, that would help move these along for release, for approval and release. Go. Great, thank you. So any discussion on the February 2nd, 2023 meeting minutes from the executive session? Not seeing any. So looking for a motion to basically to vote to approve and to release these minutes. Motion by Matt, second by Megan, then in favor. So that's going to be four in favor and one recusal. Excellent, thank you. Next set of minutes will be the March 9th Executive Session, 2023. This is again for a vote to approve and to release. Megan, you were not there for this one, but we should have.
I was only there for half. I don't know if that...
Again, and it's only really just to approve those, those minutes. So it's, it's not a sense of a binding aspect to it. So any discussion on the March 9th, 2023 Executive Session minutes? Not seeing any. Again, Robin, if you, you were present for a part of it, if you, with John not being here, if you feel like you're not comfortable voting on it, we can take it up at the next meeting when both Michael and John are here.
I can refer to them.
Okay, so that's fine. So we're going to pass over the March 9th, 2023, and with hope so we can get the personnel here. So not a problem. Thank you. All right. Last is the June 1st, 2023, and this is also a vote to approve and to release. With those, Michael was the only one that was not present at this meeting. Any question or discussion?
Just one minor thing to add.
Oh, yes.
Item number one, the very bottom section where Meg made a motion, it's missing the second. I believe I did the second on that.
Okay, excellent, great.
Can you say that one more time?
June 1st?
Yep, I got that.
As me, first item, very bottom paragraph, Meg motioned, and the second is missing from the listing. That was me.
Matt, second. Perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Chris with that amendment.
Great, thank you, Meg. So motion to approve the June 1st, 2023 with corrections. Second by Robin, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent. Great. Okay. Moving on to announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Any committee members have anything to, in that category? Not seeing.
I guess I would just thank all the buildings that hosted the back-to-school open house nights. Chris, it's so great to get back in the classroom and kind of hear what's going on. So thanks to all the teachers who carved out time to be there for that.
Great, thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
I have got one.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, we're, the, the field at the high school, the turf field has been installed and it's fantastic. The next phase of the project is a little more challenging and complicated. It's the track installation. And I know there was an update last week, but I'm going to keep saying this anytime I'm in a public, public setting. The field and the track are going to be closed. That whole area is going to be closed from 9/27 through October 9. Now, it's possible those dates could change, but right now that's what we've got. And I want to give credit to our athletic director, who's done a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure practices are taking place and all the games are, you know, we're able to schedule all those. But it's critically important folks stay off the track because once it's installed, it needs secure for a couple of weeks. And what that means is it means that people cannot walk on the track because if they do, it's going to do some damage to the track, which I think length of the time it's going to take to install the track or, you know, make adjustments. So we're reaching out to all of the, you know, U-Sports. We're putting it out in a lot of different places. I'm going to send out a little reminder, email, but just critically important that once we close the facility, it's closed until everybody can kind of rewalk on the track. Initially, we thought we were going to have a workaround. That is not the case. So just for everybody watching at home, you know, we're going to be putting signs up. We're going to be locking the gates. That means don't climb over the fence, don't walk on the track because it will cause damage to the track and it will, it will just delay the project. So thank you.
Thanks for that update. Robin?
I was just going to say really briefly, September 30th is the Special Olympics 5K, and that benefits all the different Special Olympics programs which is through the opportunity use. So just wanted to put a little plug for anyone in the community who's looking for an excuse to get active. That'll be a really nice day.
Great, thank you very much.
I have two things, please. One is at the beginning of September, we put out an all-call for the equity audit that we're doing. We're still, I'm probably going to send it back out to families again because we're still looking for folks that are willing to serve on our collaborative equity audit team. We're looking for 24 people. We're, I think last I counted, we're about half of that, and that's between, you know, staff, families, and students. The other thing is focus group. So there's an opportunity for fam, people in the community or families to get involved in the focus group. That's one night. I think it's an hour. It's on, it's on Zoom, I believe. So if folks can only give an hour, that'd be a, a good way to do that. We're only looking for 12 on that. But I think, some folks that, that put it in said that they could do both of them, but we really don't want you to do both. So we need a bigger group of folks, I think, to draw from. That's one. And then two, this past week, our MCAS data came out. So folk, families will be getting that information. We haven't got it yet from the state for the individual reports. So families should be getting it probably, I would say, mid-October to end of October.
Maybe early November.
Maybe. But we'll, in addition to that, in a future meeting, both Carol, the Carol and Carrie will be here talking about MCAS scores and how we did.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that update. Anything else? All good? All right, great. Moving on to invitation to speak. Anybody here invitation to speak? I believe so. So moving on, our next agenda item will be the Community Use Board Member Appointment. Hope everybody, sorry. We had a few individuals that had expressed interest. I reached out to the individuals this week and asked them to, to join us. Meg had that idea of, of having individuals come to be able to engage with us, which I think was a great idea. So I believe we have one individual here, Tony. So why don't you come on up to the seats that are right up in front of us here, and just kind of go through. Matt?
Are all these names on the list still active in terms of?
They are all still active. Ms. Brown reached out and had a conflict. So she wasn't able to make it tonight. Again, I, I didn't hear from anybody else besides Ms. Brown and, you know, Ms. Chapinidi here to come by. So.
Before I get started, I'm going to go out of this one for potential conflict, okay?
Correct. Not a problem. You're welcome to stay at the table. It's not a problem there, but feel free to go see what happens. Yeah, so, so excellent. I guess before we open it up, anybody have any questions or comments? I mean, we met with Community Use, which will, we can go through in the Subcommittee Updates. Again, we're just trying to, to fill the, the one seat remaining from the school committee side of it. So which would be a good thing to do. I know it's been a long delay to try to get the seat filled. So here we are. So I'm going to turn it over to our first guest here. Introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be on Community Use Board.
My name is Tony Chinapi. Just turned 77 years old and a lifelong resident of Milford. First of all, I want to thank each member of the school committee for allowing me to speak tonight. Dr. McIntyre, Mr. Consigli. I, I have an interest in serving on the committee for a couple of reasons, three particularly. First of all, I have the time, and I think any, any committee like this needs a person that has the time. Secondly, I was present when the Community School Use Program concept came into play in the early 70s. So I feel I have a good understanding of the, kind of the features and benefits of the program, and I've seen some really good things. I've collected some ideas along the way. I have a second residence in Thalmouth, and they have a really good developed program there. So I have some ideas from their program. So, you know, with that history, I, I think I've got a good perspective. Thirdly, and lastly, my past experience as a teacher, coach, athletic director here at the high school, and then my business career following that, I think puts me in a place to, from those experiences, I think I can add value to the program in really a variety of ways. So, you know, without any further ado, I think those are the three main reasons why I've, I've been around, I've got time, and I've got some experience behind me. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Chinapi?
I know you're actively involved in the mentoring program at the high school as well. I'd love to hear Mr. Chinapi kind of why Community Use. You spoke to it a little bit, but just.
Yeah, Megan's referring to our connections program with the high, with the high school students through Principal Ottland. Five years ago now, so it's been in existence for five years, we, we developed some criteria. I remember sitting down with, I think, Dr. McIntyre and, and Josh, and we were going to save the world. You know, we were going to, every child that had a problem, we were going to mentor them. Well, we, we realized that that's not really possible, so we had a, a much more confined focus, and it's worked out exceptionally well. Our basic criteria are good students, first-generation kids, and participate in the lunch program. So there's an economic factor. We work with the, with the students through high school. Right now, I have three boys in college, one attending UMass Amherst, one attending UMass Lowell, and one attending Framingham State. Absolutely, positively the right places for them. Economically, it fits in very nice with their budget. We work very, very closely with a variety of people from the community, different sources that were available to us, and the program really is, is doing well. My job now is to stay with these three boys as they progress and make sure they graduate because statistically, that group of, that select group, probably 50 or, or 40% of that group will not graduate. So, you know, to, to see the program through, we want to see them graduate particularly in four years, but will take five if, if, if it has to be. So I didn't think I'd be speaking on that, but.
Sorry, my, my question was more, why in addition Community Use? I want to sit about Community Use, and I apologize if that wasn't clear. Absolutely.
Tony's an MVP of that program, too. I could say that with like, I hear Josh glowingly talks about you and your impact on these, on these young, young people. So you're, you're making a huge impact. I, I want to say that while you're here.
I truly appreciate that. I, I've got to say, Josh, I don't know how he does it because he's involved in so many aspects of student life, and he's right on our case, I might add as well, positively. You know what? It, it's just, I still consider myself an educator even though I got into finances. And I, I think this, I don't want to get carried away here, but, but the, the reason that I did relatively well in business was because of my educational background. I mean, it came down, instead of dealing with, with kids, I was dealing with parents. Instead of dealing with X's and O's, I was dealing with dollar consents. So I, I didn't come here for, for all that, but it's a great program. Please continue supporting it. We've also associated ourselves with the, in Framingham, help me out. It's an organization, an organization.
Are you talking adult ESL or?
No, no, with the connections program, we've affiliated with.
Oh, the College Planning Center.
Yeah, with, with the College Planning Center and a couple of others for financial support. So I'm sorry for the, the extended dialogue.
Good.
But if you have any questions, if you can imagine, I, I remember when the concept started back in, in before, when the, when this school, which I refer to as the New Milford High School, was, was on the drawing board. Engelhardt and Engelhardt was the, the architects, and, and we had all new people coming and new faculty. We had great kids. It, it was really exciting. It was really exciting. And the community use aspect really got off the ground tremendously early on and, and has continued. So I think I've taken up my time.
No worries. We appreciate you being here tonight. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Do you have any goals for the program?
Yeah, yes, I do. I, I want to reach out into areas that aren't, aren't typical. Just for example, and again, I'm using Thalmouth as a little bit of an example. There was just recently an incident with, with a young, a young person saving a person from drowning because he had seen on TV resuscitation techniques without actually taking the course. So I know at Thalmouth, they have a course in CPR. I think we've done some things at the pool in the past, but I think a refresher course or something like that, that, that not only is educational, but, but, you know, certainly the potential through a lifetime of saving a life. I'm interested in meeting with the other people on the committee, of which who I really don't know. But I think sharing those ideas and, and I know there's a new, a new director. I, I know Jim from a distance, so I look forward to working with him as well. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Not seeing.
I think I've taken more than my time.
No problem. It's all right. We appreciate it. Yeah, actually, yeah. And just, just to note, right, we had on the list, Mr. Richard Brothers, Mr. Nick Killey, Tony that was just here, Paige Brown, and Ron Andrews. Again, we had two, two of them had accepted or had enclosed bios for us. So again, it was nice to, to have a candidate come by. At this point, again, it's, we're looking for, we'll be looking for entertaining motion to nominate one person for a three-year seat on the Milford Community Use Board. So look to see what the pleasure of our board is and go from there. Do you have anybody? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Chinapi. I really appreciate him coming here to speak. So I would like to make a motion to.
Excellent, thank you. All right, motion?
I'll say that.
And second by Brendan, and then all in. Any other discussion, I guess, real quick? Nope, see you. All right, then all in favor, and that is unanimous. Congratulations.
I just asked for the pay level.
Yes, it's the same as school committee.
Lots of zeros.
Yes, yeah, yes, exactly. Same as school. Thank you, thanks. Congratulations, and we'll make sure that Community Use reaches out to you. I have your contact information, so we will proceed from there.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. You might already have.
Great, thank you. All right. Moving on to our update on school space. So basically, yeah, I, I reached out to Dr. McIntyre, just kind of a, from a generic, just, you know, where are we at and where are we going? You know, that we're kind of, you know, our school's face is, is busting at the seams, and it's very important, and, and just try to get it on our radar, what administration team has in their mind and what we can do from our side of it to support that. So, Dr. McIntyre.
Yeah, thank you. As, as we all know, enrollment's been a little unpredictable, but it's been trending upward. Last year, we were stable, which was great. This year, it's kind of wait and see because we're not going to know. I can say the Family Resource Center is very busy and has been busy since, I'd say, mid-July. And as you know, we are, just lost my spot. We're challenged by space limitations across the district. And soon, we'll be wrapping up the Brookside Elementary School addition project, which will provide six additional classrooms at the K2 level. We've also created numerous classroom spaces over the last several years in nearly all of our buildings. And recently, we released space downtown for the Family Resource Center, and this, this ended up being a really fantastic thing on a number of levels. First, it allowed us to create two additional classrooms. It's Shining Star Early Childhood Center. It created a more professional space that allowed for greater confidentiality for our Family Resource Center staff. If you visited the Family Resource Center before we moved downtown, it was in two classrooms. It was very open and, you know, families often share confidential information, and the new space has really provided for a much more professional atmosphere. It's also provided a more accessible place for the community to engage with the Family Resource Center, being downtown. One thing I'd like to do is explore additional commercial space in the community for offices for district-wide staff to potentially alleviate some of the space limitations we are facing. We would potentially seek space for central office, maybe curriculum team members, and other offices throughout the district. An agent we've worked with previously reached out to me a few weeks ago, and I just want to get a sense of the committee's interest in exploring additional office space options at this time. And, and obviously, the options in town would potentially drive the offices we would be able to relocate to, you know, either space downtown or space somewhere in town. You know, we're waiting for a response from the MSBA application for the, the Milford High School project, which is, you know, part of that project is to bring the eighth grade over, which is also going to alleviate space across the district. But this is something, I think the commercial real estate market right now is, is opposite of the residential market. It's very good for, for people interested in space, and it may be a good time to at least explore it. And what I'd ask of you tonight is to say, like, you know, work with some folks in the community who have an expertise in this area and see what space is available, if any of it is viable for our needs. And when I say that, it's layout, it's location. You know, we want our folks to be accessible to the schools. One of the great things about having the central office in the high school, which is why I have a little trepidation of potentially moving, is I have, you know, Josh Ottington walking across the hallway at any point, we can connect on important issues. I can see the athletic director. I can see the director of nursing and also the preschool director. So there's some value in being here. But I think, I think it's worth at least, I'm going to use the term kicking the tires on space to see what's available in town, to see what the cost is, and then weigh that out. Is the benefit of creating some space in some of our buildings worth, you know, making a move and moving some people to a space, you know, either in downtown or being sure a spot somewhere, somewhere in the community. Craig and I this morning had a conversation about, we were trying to find space for a couple of different people because, you know, the space just isn't, like, people are sharing offices. There's, there's a number of situations where people are kind of on top of each other. And we have similar situations where people are having meetings or confidential conversations, and there's other, and I don't mean confidential conversations in the sense that they're sharing information publicly. I don't want to, I don't want to misconstrue that or misrepresent that. But, but there's, there's definitely a need, and we all know it. There's a need for space. And I think if we have, like, we've seen a huge benefit of having really, really professional office space for the Family Resource Center. It's worked out very, very well. And so I opened it up to questions, comments.
Matt? Yeah, I would say I think that exploring, excuse me, exploring this is probably a necessity, right? We don't know about MSBA. Even if they tell us tomorrow that they're accepting us, we're still three, four, five years out, right? So we're still going to be short on space for a while.
Yep.
What I would like to see, obviously, in exploring, and I know you sent some stuff over, one of them was, was a kitchen or something. It was something that wasn't office space. They need to renovate another one. They wanted a five-year lease or something like that. So I would hope that there's something out there where maybe we don't have to commit too long because if we ended up in a new high school in four years, it would be unfortunate to have to waste a little bit of that money. But I would also like to know, from a numbers standpoint, just to, just to kind of paint the picture more completely, how many rooms do you think we could open up? What kind of space would, you know, would we be able to, if central office moved, maybe there's a classroom or two there. But there's, that sounds like a good reason not to move central office. So like, if you guys didn't move, what are we actually opening up for space? Just as, as an idea, obviously, that's the second part of the.
And I think, yeah, so to just respond to that quickly, I think, you know, the space will drive, like, the space that's available will drive some of what we would look at. The other, the other thing we're running into too, which is parking. You know, parking is, you know, if you've been at Brookside at any point during the day, or even Stacy Memorial, like, parking at the high school sign for preschool, and Woodland was still in good shape, but we're, we're running out of parking spaces at a number of our schools too. And I think if we move some people out too, that's another ancillary benefit as we open up some parking spaces because we have more people in the schools than we ever had.
I have to clarify a question to that, Kevin. So in my mind, when, the initial example you gave was central office, which kind of made sense to me because those aren't necessarily people that are interacting with students on a day-to-day basis. But when you start talking Brookside, I'm curious who's in that building that's not dealing with students?
Well, we, we have like some district-wide people, like social workers or attendance supervisors. And again, they're going to be in all the buildings across the district or.
So the home base would be somewhere else and then.
Yeah, but they would be, they'd still be in the buildings, but they would be like, Lisa Kincaid's at the downtown office, but she's in, in the buildings all the time.
Okay.
Is a great, General Janey, same thing, our ESL directors, you know, and our interpreters, although that's their home base, they're in our buildings all the time, but they have office space down there. And they do a lot of meetings like on Zoom and have meetings with families.
Got it.
Down in the offices. So I think it, it kind of, yeah, it kind of accomplishes two things. So that'd be like another group of folks that would look.
Potential, okay. I mean, I'm definitely with Matt in terms of like, there's no question that space is needed, but so there's, I definitely would support exploring it for sure. I guess the piece that I would really like to understand, and I think you had to step out at the last meeting when I asked for this, is as you present enrollment information or as you present sort of spacing information, to show us trends. So like, over the last five years, here's how many classrooms we had in each building. Because I think we actually have a bigger issue that we should be paying attention to as we think about it. So now we've added these classrooms at Brookside, just so we can look at it holistically as we think about getting space. And should we be getting a, a small amount of space? Should we be looking? Just so we can start to think about making the right decisions for the next few years.
Yeah, and, and I think there's going to be, like, we did this project at Brookside. You know, if we keep expanding, there's going to be very different conversations that we're going to have, you know.
But I think we need that information to, to talk about those decisions as well. So I think it'd be helpful when we have the conversation to have that information available.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm going to assume there's no MSBA update at all.
No, if there was, I'd be, that'd be right on the agenda.
I figured I'd ask. Timing is still like November, maybe?
I, I think so. The timing's been weird because of COVID. I, I think so. The timing's been weird because of COVID. I'll check on the website. I think it was, we, I think we heard late fall last year. I think it's going to be a little earlier this year.
Okay.
So probably the next four to six weeks.
This is around when, though, they asked for a visit last year?
Yes, yes.
And they have not asked for a visit?
Not yet. But I want to say that was like sometime in October, when they reached out to me.
Okay.
Of last year.
Got it.
I could be misremembering, but I think, but that's just, for some reason, that sticks out.
Got it.
So we'll hear from them, I'm assuming, in the next, again, four to six weeks. The other challenge there, which we've talked about, is just the escalating cost of building projects, which I think limits the number of projects they can put forward.
Questions?
Can I apologize, this was discussed last meeting, I missed it. So at Brookside right now, since those six classrooms are not completed, are there, is there just an overload of students in the current classrooms, or what's happening?
Yeah, so what, what we're doing, and again, it's, it's, it's far from ideal and what we wanted to avoid, is the, the classrooms that are impacted, like the, 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 uh, the actual grade level classrooms that are impacted are generally in the specialist rooms, and the specialists are going to classrooms to, to provide the instruction in like music, art, STEM. That's what, that's what's happening right now. So they, they have functioning classrooms, which, but it's not their permanent classroom, which is a challenge. And also, it's a challenge, obviously, for our specialists who are not able, you know, it impacts their planning.
One question out, if anyone knows the answer to this. By renting out commercial space, is that taking from the tax dollars, tax base that the town would get from the revenue from that?
I don't think so.
Because like, I mean, I, I don't know how that tiers out.
I, I think in our current lease, we're just like, like any other tenant.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
Got it. Yeah, I don't know.
Good question, yeah. Question how that would work. Basically, a question, you know, if we were to create space here or alleviate some space here, are there certain programs that we could bring back in? Have we gotten that far down, saying, okay, if, if central office opens up, we can create these new programs? Or is it just to alleviate space from the general, you know, math, English, social studies programs?
Yeah, I think we could have some classroom space, some pull-out, you know, small group space, some office space. It's, it's really more alleviating with the crowded, more crowded conditions. The square footage, and I've said this, like, like I'm beating a dead horse, the square footage of the high school is incredible. The usable classroom space is a little bit, like, we've almost, like, I think, fully used every space we could to create like additional classroom space. So that's, we're kind of almost at the, you know, maybe Carlos has a different eye, and you can see something, but we're, we're kind of like maxing out here.
Has this room ever come into discussion for being used?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, I know.
This is like the last space.
The problem, though.
In terms of us, we could always do this at the town hall, but auditorium, anywhere, like, but I, I know you use it more than this.
Yeah, so the challenge we have is we have very few spaces where we can do like professional development and meetings, and this is one of like, what would you say?
Two.
Two spaces in the district where we could.
Yeah, so basically, it's here on Memorial Hall, which.
Memorial Hall, if we have a bigger group, there's parking issues.
Parking's terrible.
So that's, that's been the, I think it was just school committee, you know, no offense, but we probably, yeah, we probably move our location, but I think it's one of the few spaces we have where we can hold a meeting of like, say, thirty or forty teachers, a presentation, or professional development, and that sort of thing. We do need those spaces.
Well, and really, you're talking more during the school day, right? After school, people can have in the cafeterias or gyms or whatever. But during the school day.
We have very limited spaces during the school day, actually. Like, we have meetings of like more than, like, you know, eight to ten people. This is one of the, the three, the two spaces across the district.
Just a way to put in discussion space, and this, I wouldn't anticipate you'd have this number right now, so it would be a future meeting, but would it be possible to get a breakdown of just by school, average class sizes, so we can just kind of see across the district what that.
When you say average class sizes, do you mean square footage, or do you mean number of students?
Like, number of students.
Yeah, we, we do that a couple of times a year. That's very easy to pull.
And have we notified like a Rick Balani saying, hey, we're looking for space, you know, Milford Water Company, we now have acquired that building. I know there's other tenants in there, you know, is that a viable space for the future? Uh, Milford Geriatric, is there any space down there, and, and whatever?
I can definitely reach out.
So we haven't yet, so.
John tends to be my conduit to that one.
Okay.
But I can definitely have a formal meeting with Rick and just say, hey, you know, and I know town hall's pretty strapped for space, too.
Yeah, exactly. So that's why I just, I'd want to say, you know, in a sense, get into that pipeline and, and just let them know that, hey, we're, we're also strapped for space. I mean, they know from the classroom side of it, but even from the office side. And, and for every, if we can move some offices out of here, we can create classroom space. And, and again, it's a return on investment, right? If, if we create space, can we create new programs or bring back programs that, that have since, we've lost, because we've lost the space. So I think I'd like to see that also too, from the standpoint of, again, what is our return on that, that investment? Because it's, it's going to cost us money to go offsite, no doubt about it. But if we can say we can institute four or five of these programs that we've lost, I think it's, it's worth that discussion. And I guess, you know, is it truly needed in the downtown area, you know, from your, from your side of it, office-wise?
It depends on who it is, because if someone is meeting with parents regularly, so that can be kind of nice, because it's convenient for a lot of folks, particularly folks that don't have access to transportation. You know, downtown isn't like, you know, it's, it's not downtown or nothing, but I think, you know, the Family Resource Center made a lot of sense to go downtown because people are registering, it's a pretty central location right on Main Street. It's, it's worked out really well. I think if, like, it was central office, or special ed, or some curriculum folks, they may not need that access to the public, that, you know. Like, I don't have, you know, meetings all the time with parents, but you just, you know, just not need with parents every single day, so it's not critical.
And I guess, do you foresee this being in our next budget cycle, that we'll, starting to, to really explore this?
Potentially, I think, you know, if you got, it, it sounds like people, you're generally interested in at least exploring. I can probably start, like, seeing what's available, looking at pricing, looking at, like, you know, like, to answer the questions that came across, like, what space would we open up? What would be the advantages, what, what are some of the drawbacks? And kind of go from there. Because we, we, we kind of slayed multiple dragons with the FRC piece, and that was ideal. I don't know if it'll have, it, it may have a better impact, it may not. We'd have to see what the space is and what we can do with it, what makes sense. It's a lot of hypotheticals.
And do you still consider keeping, like, Shining Star here, or is that still an, an exploration of offsite?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if we bought a property, if something became available, I think that would be ideal. I would be nervous about renting space. I'm like, I think we can, I feel like the last time we did it, I think the max we can do is five years, but that might have been just for office space. If we, I'd be nervous about putting like a permanent program in a space that could disappear on us. Where office space, if we had to move, we could, we could work some things out, I think. We have a little more flexibility. But if, you know, if there was an interest and there was some property available that was a perfect fit, I'd say, let's look at that. But that hasn't, that hasn't jumped, like, I haven't seen anything like that jump out, where there's ample parking, it's, you know, safe for preschoolers, there's playground space, you know, and, you know, if someone knows of that, I might get a call from a couple of realtors.
One more thought, not to pull the IT guy comment on this one, but have we discussed or, or I guess investigated the idea of especially some of your math or reading directors, some of those other people, are just having essentially a work from home, remote space, where if they're not in their classrooms, they're in their own space working?
I think we have flexibility for folks that are twelve-month employees that can do that. Generally, like, I think everybody who's like on the administrative side that doesn't have direct teaching responsibility is engaging with folks on some level just about every day. I mean, there's some exceptions. Like, I think if someone had to write like a report or complete a project, I'd say absolutely, you know, work from home today, or today and tomorrow. We give people that flexibility. But, like, most of our folks are in classrooms, or meeting with teachers, or meeting with students, or, you know, of, you know, for attendant supervisors out in the community, visiting families, those kinds of things.
Right. Well, I, I guess my, the, the other piece to my question there is, if that's what they're doing, and most of the time they're bouncing around places, is it necessary for them to even have an office now? If, if they could essentially, if they're basically living out of their car, right? They're, they're basically bouncing around like an engineer.
I'd, I'd really have to do a look and say, like, what's, what percentage?
If we got to that.
Because, because, yeah, because they're also like, I would say they're also doing focus work, like, like Carrie and Carol are right here up in C, like near, near C, we need for executive session a lot. And I would say, Craig, you'd have a better sense of this, but they're probably like, one of them is in the office, what would you say, a third, forty percent? It depends, it depends on the day, though.
Yeah. Honestly, they spend a lot of the time in the office after-school hours. A lot of times during the school day, they're.
Out and about.
Out and about.
Yeah. That's generally what I see him as after-school.
Yeah.
That's true. But that's not, it's, it's, it's a good point. I think you could do a study of like, like, almost like a time study in what percentage of people do work, and does need space.
Maybe just have open office spaces. Does anybody use it?
That was very, like, the last office I did work in, they, for the engineers that were generally all over the place, there was, you know, thirty desks about this big, and you, if you needed one, you took it. Like, the expectation was, do your work from wherever, and then if you're facing, your client-facing or teacher-facing stuff, where you have to do it. Just another thought, if we, especially if this space doesn't pan out, that you can't find it, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. And, and there may not be space that fits our needs, too. I want to be very clear on that. I'm not saying, like, I've got my eye on this, like, perfect time, or perfect office, it's, it's just, we're, we're strapped for space.
Right.
And this might be another way to alleviate that.
Any other questions or comments on the future of our school space? Sitting in, so, excellent. All right. So moving on then to an update on the adult ESL program that is taking place at Stacy Middle School.
All right. So several years ago, we then began looking at options for adult ESL classes for the residents of Milford. Many of our residents who were seeking English classes were going to other communities for classes that were available and open to the public, many of them to Framingham. As, as part of this process, we visited the Framingham Public Schools, and Dr. Kevin O'Connor, who's the director of Adult ESL Plus program in Framingham. And after several conversations and Zoom meetings, we partnered with the Framingham Public Schools on a grant application for adult ESL classes in Milford. Select Board Member Tom Maloflin and I both wrote letters of support for the program. And I believe Tom initially connected us to the, to the folks in, in Framingham. He had some connection to them. We had a connection too, because the former superintendent was of Milford is the Framingham, Kern Framingham Superintendent. The grant application was recently successful, and the first registration, I think, was held on August twenty-fourth at Stacy Middle School. And these numbers are staggering, but two, two hundred and seventy adults from Milford signed up for the lottery, and sixty-five names were pulled for classes this fall. The funding for the classes is provided by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Adult and Community Learning Services, and the classes, again, are taking place at Stacy Middle School. Our first class is started about two weeks ago and run on Tuesdays and Thursdays from roughly six-thirty to nine-thirty. I think the classes themselves run from seven to nine, but there's a little bit of room before and after. And the first session ends, I believe, December twenty-first. And then classes will, again, will begin in January through the end of the year. We partnered with the Framingham Public Schools because they had the curriculum, the infrastructure, and personnel already in place, and a successful track record of providing this programming in Framingham for a number of years. They have, they have a full-time dedicated staff member to adult, I think several staff members to adult ESL programming. Our custodians are already on staff until eleven PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays, actually throughout the entire week, not just Tuesdays and Thursdays. The program uses limited resources in terms of electricity and other needs beyond that. We run many programs like this throughout our schools, like our buildings are generally open for everything from sports to, you know, Community Use runs like a gambit of programming. But, and this is just another program that we happen to be partnering with Framingham. We partnered with a number of organizations and outfits on a number of different initiatives. We plan to review how this program was administered this year and discuss a continuation of the program in succeeding years. Based on the initial interest, and we, we were told, which defied logic and reasoning to me, not to broadly publicize this and not to really do a big push, and we still ended up with two hundred and seventy folks that showed up to the, and, you know, they were right. So there's a real need in the community for this, and a real, like, I think, appetite for it. And it, it meets a real need. And, and one of the other things it does is we have a population of students that maybe don't necessarily fit in our night program, and are overage and undercredited, with big gaps in their education. And something like this could really fill that need for those students, because, you know, some of these students get here and they're like seventeen, eighteen years old, they have zero credits, they're likely not going to graduate, and, you know, by the time they're twen-, you know, twenty-one. And this could give them, like, English skills. And this is why a lot of communities that have large populations of families and individuals that don't speak, speak languages other than English, you know, have these programs. And I'm, I'm really excited that we're starting this year. And I think at some point, you know, if this builds and grows over time, it's something we could move in-house. But I think, you know, capacity-wise, this is the first year I'd say we're really staffed for the student population that we have. And to, you know, take on an additional, you know, basically, another school, in a sense, is probably too much based on where we are and where our student population's been growing the last several years. So I think it's very promising. They've been great partners for us. I haven't heard anything, and it's, it's brand new, but they seem to be, you know, it seems to be working well. There's instructors who, you know, work with families from, adults from Milford to teach them English. And it's something we need, and it's something that I think is going to probably grow over time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would just say, given how, I think, successful we see the evening program being that we have here.
Yep.
I'm, I don't want to say I'm not surprised, but that's, it's a massive number of people that came home for this program, and it is.
With, with no, I wouldn't say no, but very limited.
Right.
Publicizing.
No big push. It's, um, just a thought, it's too bad Mr. Shinobi walked out five minutes early ahead of go, because this could potentially have a landing spot to with Community Use on a, you know, subsidized in some way format. But do, do we have an idea, or will we have an idea, I know right now it's grant-funded, about what this would cost if we wanted to double the seats?
I, you know, I'd have to look at the grant, because I think the grant covers programs that are also occurring in Framingham, and I think it's, it's covering programs that are occurring here, too.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would have to look at that, but I, we could probably put a proposal together of what it would cost to run, like, a real program.
I think it's just, it's worth, obviously, given that, given that, that interest, it may be worth just getting an idea now, even if we can't do it for a couple of years of what this investment may be costing, because, I mean, like you said, there's, there's that group of, of students where some of these, some of these folks, if they just get the language skills to get them that one step further down the road, it's, it's a major, a major benefit. So obviously, if there's anything that we can do to help with this.
And there, and there is funding out there for it, you know, there's, there's definitely grant funding. I think our concern with running it is, like, it's been a challenge just to staff our evening program for our high school students, and to do something that would be, you know, to accommodate two hundred and seventy folks, you're talking twenty-five classes, you're talking forty, like, eleven or twelve, thirteen people running classes. It's something that I think I could see us, what I would say is, I would assess where we are at the end of this year, and then kind of come back to the committee and say, hey, this was very successful, let's look at another year, at least another year partnering with Framingham. And I don't think they're committed to, like, Framingham isn't looking to, like, become the monopoly of adult ESL classes either, because I think they have some limitations in terms of, you know, staffing and their ability to kind of, to manage, to manage programs, you know, I think beyond like a partnership with Milford. I don't want to speak for them, but I think at some point, we would look at, like, you know, is there consistent grant support? Do we have, you know, the capacity to staff it? Do we have the capacity to administer it too? Because it's not just, there's like a whole registration process. There's, 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 there's other pieces to it that don't immediately be, aren't immediately clear. But yeah, I, I agree with you. Yeah.
I was wondering, if we wanted to continue this, because I know, like, I just pulled it up, I was thinking, this sounds familiar, and I just pulled up on the library website, so they have been dropping ESL classes at the library on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So it's like right across the street, it feels like these two things are happening. So, you know, I know right now this is part of the specific grant, but if we did want to continue this, it almost feels like let's bring these different spaces and work together, and if this happens, so, just an idea.
Yeah, and I would say to do it right, we'd have to have, like, professional staff. And, and I, and I think the program the library's running is fantastic. But, but I think, like, I think we'll get a sense, is there like a sustained need? I'm going to probably say there probably is. And then kind of get a sense of, like, what direction do we take in a couple of years with this.
I think it's phenomenal, Kevin. Is the grant one year?
I'd have to double-check that. I think it's at least one year. I think it's, might be two.
And, and just to clarify, the partnership with Framingham, they're providing the staff?
They're providing the staffing, the administrative structure, they're doing all the registration. So really, what we're providing is the space.
Okay, no, that's excellent. Okay, no, that's excellent. I think, you know, to Robin and Matt's point, I guess, this is where I go when I talk about like. Our community challenges, like to me, the town should be funding this. Like this is such a benefit for our community, like. I think we we have a lot to take on. So I almost feel like we should, if we should continue this and we should raise this conversation at the town level. And figure out how is a community we can support this because it would be incredibly valuable, so. Just food for thought for another day.
But pleased, very pleased so far, I have to say, you know, early on, but um, they've been great to work with. Doc, I call Kevin, but it's, Dr. O'Connor is fantastic. Um, he's been very accessible to us. Um, you know, Jim McGore's been working with him, General Jean, he's been working with him, Craig and I have been working with him a little bit. Um, but they they haven't been like, some partnerships, it's a lot of like, like it seems like it'd be turnkey and it's a lot of lift. This has been very turnkey for us, which has been very nice because we really are limited in our capacity.
Yeah, I guess from my side, just, you know, a couple of questions more just from the the financial impact. I think it's a great program. I think it's 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 obviously. Uh, with two hundred and seventy applicants, um, certainly a program that can expand. And just to kind of roll back and just again, typically when we have outside groups coming into our facility. We we have like a a rental fee, so it sounds like we're waiving the rental fee for this group. But just again, it, you know, the there is heat and electricity and cleaning that. I just wanna make sure that the the school system and the taxpayers aren't being, you know, it's not an overburden on them.
I would say, I would say it it is not an overburden on the taxpayers. Uh, like you said, we have custodians already in the building till eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, we don't turn the heat off at night, uh, because we're running athletic programs um, consistently.
Okay.
There's community use programs happening in all of our buildings. I wouldn't look at this like, we rent space to folks that are like, like if someone is, like I'm. I'm gonna come up with a terrible example because I'm kind of over retired today, but I'm Kevin, the crochet guy and I'm running a crochet class. And I'm charging people seventy-five bucks for my crocheting class and I'm making a profit on it. That's something where we would lease it out.
Okay.
Because somebody's making, this is a grant funded program that's one hundred percent benefiting the Milford community.
Okay.
And so, you know, the whole, one of the whole points of Community Use, and I think eventually this program, if it were to come here, would probably land there, possibly.
Right.
Um, is just a benefit to the community and that's what it's providing and it's, it's really not. I I there's there's really no, like if there were significant issues around cleanliness or teachers coming into the classroom to say, you know, what happened here.
Right.
Um, I think we've, you know, obviously have a conversation with the adult ESL program, you know, work with them and make some adjustments. I think because it's adults, because what they're doing is language, you know, based, they're learning English. I don't think they're, you know, they're not making clay projects that are causing messes, you know, things like that, which is in classrooms, learning English.
And then safety and security standpoint, because obviously, so now the doors are open and access, there's more access throughout the school. Are we providing any additional security?
No, I would say the custodians kind of handle that to 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 a great degree and I would wouldn't say this program is any different than any other evening program. You know, we have, we have, we open our buildings all the time to the community. And you know, in some cases, when there's like a special program, off hours, we have folks there. But you know, for like adult language classes, I don't think we're really gonna put additional security measures in place.
Any other questions on the night ESL program? I'm not seeing any. Thank you for that update, appreciate it. Moving on then to the uh, Facilities Department School Readiness Report.
Yes.
Fellas, come on up. I'm assuming you're having Carlos join us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go on up and join us, Carlos.
He's the, he's the star of the show.
You're right.
Thank goodness. Um, can I give a brief introduction before we?
Of course, yes, please, yes.
So, so Carlos came to us, um, I think, what was it, June you started, right Carlos? Was it June? And.
Beginning of July, yes.
Was it beginning of July? So late, alright, beginning of July. So. I've never met a more enthusiastic human being than Carlos Pena. Um, and he brings a passion to the work that I would say is unparalleled. Um, he cares deeply about um, the facilities. I, like, like almost they were his children. He really cares about customer service. He's really committed to that and we've gotten really, really positive reviews. Um, from, and again, we're very early into the school year, but the principals have been very positive about their interactions with 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 Carlos. And um, you know, we're starting to hear very positive things from our, from our teachers. Um, and you know, I think he's off to a great start in how he's kind of approaching the work and how he is um, kind of approaching the day to day. Because like, I think like, you know, any of us who are in central office, we have a plan for the day. And something happens and that plan just goes out the window and you just have to deal with whatever comes across the door. I think Carlos is very flexible from that perspective too. And he's able to really prioritize things and um, he's got a phenomenal background in facilities management. And um, you know, we have buildings that are, you know, Stacy, I think is close to a hundred years old. This building is, I think, over fifty now. Woodlands still, you know, not even in its adolescence. So we have a range and the systems are all very different into the buildings and he's been able to kind of really engage. Um, I think in very meaningful ways so far. And I think we've made a lot of progress in, I think, the short time he's been with us, so. I'm gonna turn it over, unless Chris, you have anything else you wanna?
Nope.
Turn it over to Carlos to kind of address, you know, uh, our chair had uh, presented some areas that he wanted Carlos to comment on. And he's gonna kind of give you kind of an overview of where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for the notes, Kevin. Um, and thank you for having me here. So I didn't get to be. Explaining where we got, you guys heard me for oversee all the five facilities. I've been looking every building with very careful with my knowledge, with my background. I I got good feedback from the people because I normally go see what happened. And see the person face to face. It helped me to identify the situation. Because I get from the own hands, from the own words, what it is and. Don't matter scenarios, I got system, they are fifty years old and I got system, they are seven year old like Willan. And being child on twelve, hey, I had to be here from seven to three, so I had to enjoy it again, so. It's all matters. It's tried to solve a lot of big teams, small teams. It's part of the job, uh, the word description. I've been a gay, a guy come work with me two, three weeks ago. He's been helping out to like, I've been teaching him the hours, so we can work together. I could get another person coming uh, beginning of October. So I already have some plans to, we can maybe split all the functions in the buildings. And how we can maintain the safety and comfort for the customers. For the occupancies in every building. Here we dealing with adults, we adult with all age, adults, kids, all matters. So it's not like, oh, I'm gonna go to this person because it's, no, it's generic. All our customers, I look the facilities as me as a general contractor. I wanna see where I can help. I understand some plumbing, I saw some electrics, some HVAC, some stuff like that, so. It, I'm not gonna say I'm a multitask guy, but at least use sometimes common sense. If that take me to find some matters, like I says, some units are way too old. Oh, it's okay. Summer is almost over. I dealt with the heating season and I think uh, we did it just okay. Well, it's, I I know I'm, got some items I mentioned to you the past time. The chiller for the auditorium, the chiller for this building. Uh, most in this building and Stacy, we got some matters in the HVAC side. But it's been, I was able to management and made some adjustments, make, just work for now. Because the history for specifically this high school building is the people say, well, we. We was gonna move in five years, so a lot of things was left behind from the previous people. And get through that was tough or. It's okay now. I don't complain. I know, they not take me anywhere. Because now I'm the one have it, so I had to find solutions. If I complain, where I gonna go? Every morning come with head is, no, I wanna leave from the school and, oh, it was the day so nice. And I go home, take it easy. Next day I come back, it's another day. I checked with uh, principals of the other schools, most every other day. I sit with the assistant principal or principal of the school. They based in the IQ, what orders, stuff like that. Now I try to catch up because in the past three months I've been here. I was just working and I got a call, I not even go to the IQ, I just go fix it and go to the next one, fix it, go fix it. But when I go to the IQs, so many hours. I don't even worry about because the major is already done and soon as I set my soul in all facilities, I'm gonna start closing. But because you able to see all the orders they are open, there's no second call for that. So if there's no second call, mean it's done. The the person has been already focused on the problem and I already create a priority. I already busy the person, it's work in process. The habit is wanting is do the mechanical part or the thing is. So if I gonna spend an hour, two hours just to let out, I prefer go and fix. Uh, in Stacy at the roof, I got rooftop unit with leaking water to the ceilings. I need to find what is there. That going to a light, the light is gonna go to the the fire alarm system and create a big issue. No, it's part of the work. I apologize for the IQs, there's no many part, they are there for, it's work in process. Soon as I get my clue, the other person, it's gonna be done. That is uh, genetic. Now I cannot say about the, one of the things I'm more concerned in the schools because we do with humans. Is the safety. Safety is my priority one. So in my beginning, it's there is in here, I get with the fire alarm. Uh, company, uh, sprinkled company. And we do every single repair has to be done and every school has been done. Every, this higher school is everyday, Stacy, Memorial, all the buildings. The fire department came to me. Two weeks ago and they say, Carlos, first time, we can give you the certificate for every building. And I got the certificates, right here I can show you, for every building. Little things to correct, uh, based on what the focus was in the beginning, I got very good feedback from them. For uh, the lieutenants and for the chief, Mike. They, when they come here, when they had any situation, they said, thank you. Everything has been addressed by the spa. So for me, that's good, safety is first, so that's been done. I got all the fire inspectors done, all the fire alarms done, all the elevators has been done. We got the associate elevators company, they do three other buildings for us. And we got others do uh, woodland and. Brookside we know how, so we got three and four, so that's why, only four. But uh, expect a contract has been signed for uh, right now. Uh, we, uh, I got the new contract for associate elevators. Uh, basically what they said, the contract was very old, so we, I saw giving an update pro uh, project. New phone calls, update all the list, contact persons there, contact persons here. Right now are in my speed dial, so when I need someone, I can get it and that's priority one. Someone call me for whatever it is, I go and get someone here in the next half hour, forty-five minutes. Because I looking for something if they are. If not, maybe some actions, it can be override and get it done of. Or everything with the safety, everything by code, nothing go like the shortcut or or vendors, no. I don't like that. I prefer go right now and do the thing with one price. And the laptop help me for the rest. So I did in the right time, no, pack the money. Little by little, little by little, when you see in the end, you don't see nothing. That's my philosophy in facilities. Do all once done, stand together, phone call for four hours, service call for four hours. I call and I say, no, submit the technician for eight hours. And I paid for eight hours and I give you three, four different jobs, done completed and same prices for two phone service calls. I. It's a function, anyway. So that's part of the operations for uh, facilities. At the Brookside, uh, we've been dealing with the new seats classrooms, a beer. Sneaking in, oversee the stuff, how the things going. Uh, we know in the beginning, we were expecting that project done two weeks ago. Now we say they're gonna be done, and the last call was done this weekend. But with the weather, all these things, we got all these thunderstorms and every week we got two or three. And a lot of the store was supposed to be done outside. I've created some delays and contractors, you know how it is, is. We depend for somebody and somebody depend from somebody to get something done, so that that is, that's coordination. Uh, they don't make us too happy, but it is what it is. We leave what we got and we try to get it done. Uh, we able to um. Accomplish a lot of done this week is uh, the sprinkle system is already done. They're waiting to shut down. Maybe this weekend to make the tight connection through the building. I already made the pipe feeder and we looking into that. Fire alarms has been, uh, electrician has been working in that same thing. Uh, this Saturday, I'm gonna be here at six o'clock in the morning. Because at Brookside, it was a big problem with the main fire alarm panel. Uh, I put in a new panel, new dial and new install, so we're gonna work in the panel for six hours. We're gonna test every device, every song, make you sure by noon time. We're gonna be from six in in the morning to twelve, check every, make you everything is done and work properly. So that's the news. I thought Brian, the guy from the contractor, if he need any assistance or any work, I always open to them. Because I know how our building is, so I can give, I I've been offered a feedback. So they can receive faster with the project. It's, it's gone. Uh, today I see the frame with all the rooftop units on the roof, the dark wall has been connected. Kevin from RIT already got the uh, network people to run the firewall. Go to the firewall, all the stuff because the delay was to the bridge between the two buildings. Need to be completed, so pipings go in the bridge to attach to the building. So that's all work in process. The then, uh, now we expect for next week, we the magic week to finish punch lists. Making sure everything is done by the code. Uh, I need to check with the person they is, get the contract from us. If we, if my department or I had to go and do my own punch list, I do it by look. You hear me? Or we we're gonna require, I prefer to the general contractor give me punch lists. From them, the every iron is be done by the specs. That's thing is my safe part, everything is done by the specs, we okay. I've been see the stop alive, so I see everything is done by code, sub panel is done by code, everything is done by code. But. You, you are contractor, you know how things is, you got your house, you know how you expect your house. I lose the things without concern, make you everything is fine, so work in process, okay? Uh, I've been getting uh, calls for bathrooms of woodland here. Stacy. I've been getting calls for bathrooms of Weldon, here, Stacy, in most of our buildings. And it's been very challenge. I looked this building, I able to find the original drawings of the building and I've been study all the piping, how it is and say, for example, Building A, second floor, three sinks. One sink is drain, the other two sinks not drain. Well, you are plumber, you say all three have to be together, right? It's not. And I look, these two are separate drainers. I start pump it out, pump it out, try to get it out, get it out. And the only stuff I get it out from there is a stop from the pincers. Sitting there for, I don't know how many years. I still pump it out, pump it out, I can get it out. So I spent almost two hours just to get that look. I can get it. I sneak it in, only go to one point. I sneak it out to the other side and only go to one point. And keep going, keep going. I was with my guy there, almost like, I'm not kidding, around two hours, I can get it out. So I have more things to do. So I clean it on the floor, grab a big mess. You know, when I be in the lake, it's so bad. But wanna get it done. Got more ideas. Maybe next week I gonna find it. It's a work in process. And a lot of things in this building and these areas from classroom to store like that, like two, an hour ago, right? He got one, hello, you here? I say, yeah. You got big lake right here in Building A, right? Building A?
Seaweed.
Seaweed. And the custodian's funny, slide water is going everywhere. I go there, you say, no, I look here. No, no, wait, wait, take it easy. This is not funny, you need to find the name. Oh, I look here. I say, no, no, no. When you look, my kitchen water go. Here is small, here is big, let's keep going that way. Go there, I open there. Ah, here it is, done. We for now, no water. Tomorrow we fix it. It's things like that. The way it's designed is different than normal way. Normally, you got a scene and you got shut off right here. But this is building nineteen seventy-one and the contractors want a corner, so they not put the shut off right here. They only put one shut off after twenty sinks. So you had to install twenty sinks to make it happen. Well, it's alright, that's the way it is. We leave with that, I had to live with that. That's kind of like a generic, what we are for, we good. For, we know we getting almost down with the cooling system. So now I start working with the heating system. I started, start working with the, I got contractors this week. We already have contractors in the Weldon, big rooftop units. All completed PM to the rooftop units. We put in all new filters, check drains and everything. I got the belts in my truck. I pick it out yesterday on my way home in October. Contractors coming tomorrow. I got twenty belts to replace in all the rooftop units over there. I had to address some stuff on the roof for the intake, stuff like that. It's work in process. Those units gonna be done. Next week I got two general contractors, they gonna come to do the inspection and the boilers right here, put it by code. By being told from people that's been in the building, they say, we got three steam boilers right here, I think it's ten million bit use this one. Only two are working. So today I got the, today, today I was, had the insurance, Travels, Travels is the insurance company. He was checking the vessels and tanks. I get a tour with him all around. We leave those boilers for next week. But we didn't all the vessels in the building. We did the one we have here on the second floor. We got tank right here, we got the mesanin, we got two air compressors with substance storage stand for pneumatic controls that we have in this building. We check the boiler operation over the pool. The one is underground for the pool, which he was very happy because everything was in the same time, no, no major notice. Because I, they, when I go with persons like that, I say, even the simple thing, let me know, I get it fixed right now. And no, no say, oh, this has been told, no, nothing has been told. Do the stuff that you have to do, make the punch list. Soon you got the stop, I got that rest of next day. And that's where I am. I no way of hold it, just get it done. It's less hurt is for me because if no has been done, something happened, I just gonna look for little things. They're not gonna look for something bigger because it's already done. So that part is all said. The contractors coming next week, they gonna start doing all my boilers because October is here. We got experience here in New England. We got winter in October. I remember one Halloween with my daughter, walking on top of the snow. So I had to be prepared and for all these facilities and for make this world more efficient and my job is prevent maintenance. So if I prevent and I do right maintenance at the head, I able to spend more time and correct all the other stuff. So that's I have for that part. Sorry for the buttons, told you, Dora, it's gonna be fixed. Told you, son, it's gonna be done.
Thank you, Carlos.
Let me put it this way, right there in Weldon, the toilets in Weldon, every single toilet is leaking. And I take one dozen parts and one piece, it cost me the piece and the labor for replace it, it can cost me almost three hundred twenty dollars for every single toilet. So the way I did, I call supply house, the sold apart. We in that process right now and say, the manufacturer, why this piece fail? I no wanna go there, this is ridiculous. They got this building, they have more than thirty-five, forty toilets and every single toilet is leaking. And when I go buy a part to replace it, I, I was by my soul in that, in this time, right? Now I got a guy that can, he can go do the stop because I, anyway. It was, it cost me three hundred dollars to repair every toilet. So I just working and see how I can get the manufacturer, whatever, to get something feedback or some stuff back for us or back order or whatever. Same as in the sinks, the sinks out there. Those sinks are, the way I see a stop like that is the engineer, the interior designer, the engineer, they not look for kits. He was very fancy looking up, oh, that's a cute faucet. But they not see the tighter faucet. It is, this is no metal, this is plastic. And you know a kids, I was a kid once. Ah, sorry.
You still got a little kid in you now, Carlos.
Oh, in recess, I got a lot of things happens to my friends. You went to my brother, my brother was a young old. Yeah, we all did, it was part of the human behaviors when we grew up. So I can imagine just looking there.
Not me, Carlos, not me.
It's the way, I know. Oh, yeah, because you are the lady of the valley, it was different with nuts. I got. I'm sorry, love the money. I wasn't at Puglia School anyway, so it's different. And we speak Spanish in that place. Anyway, so it's work in process. I promise I gonna fix that, I promise I wanna take care of the list. Make you some work, it's gonna be, I've been focused that. Playgrounds, I inspect all the playgrounds at the school. I did some repairs in Weldon. They had this diamond section for the kids. The door was break down and so I find a better way with, again, a conversation with Tim. I've been, a lot of communication with the principals. Thing is one of them and it was a base around in cement, right? So when I see the way that, that section was installed, was installed over the kitchen area, so there's no way to secure it. So that's gonna be pushing all the time. So when I say, oh, this is a rumble, right? Everything has to be unlocked. So I go here and I move the thing like foot and a half and I find cement. So in that section, there were the cement, I go on depot, I get the healthy, put screws, new hitches. You can send another kid try to take that out, it's gonna be hard. The last year, so it's there. So it been, everything has been addressed from the principals. I've been watching into, today I got, I walked to the, once at Brookside. I've been looking into with Viking and see what everything is there. Everything I've been addressed with. No loose and pieces, no, nothing is unsafe. Because if I see something unsafe, there's something I try to address down in this part. And over the, here and the Chinese side, they bring to my attention because this is the playground and they have some carpet, no carpets, like this holes, plastic, heavy duty plastic. But underneath is wood.
Mosh.
Mosh. So with the years, you know, mosh is go pushing, pushing. So winter, summer, winter, now it's like a roller coaster. So because some areas are. So I wanna see how we can, I can pull that out, try to level out and put it back. So it's work in process. I got, I already saw, something is in my head, I gonna get that done. That's in the playgrounds. Now pets and bees. This time we got all those honeys coming everywhere because the honeymoon, you know, all that's, you go at the corner and you see the yellow basket, they are, oof, the queens, they are looking for the kids. I've been treated every single area where I see. I've been working directly with the milk for exterminator company. Christine is the person that's at the other side of the line and been respond very good. I did a, last week, I, I walked to the area, I find some here in Building E. I found outside, in the corners, in the, in the sinks. You see the yellow net. I've been told in the bridge, going in the football field, in the area of football field, so I put it in a map. They been treated all those areas. When I hear something from someone, I've been addressed that and the person has been coming and tried to not made that a main issue for us. Now the mouse, mice or rats or whatever. I was talking with Kevin to see if watch something and he mentioned to me, Carlos. Try digging and digging and look for any problem has been done. So the previous people already called the exterminator company and they put it on, we got some stations. But it's only where we got the dancers, you know what I mean? It's like you go here at the high school, right? The dancers, you gonna see a nice black house. Inside is cheese, hamburger, everything. So they can go inside, entertain. They go out, it's something else, they there. And then most every building they have. I said to Christine, if we can get, I can get with her look one day next week, sit down and maybe I can address different way. Okay, more covers, at least, what they can offer for us. Because everything depends as how the numbers are, how many servers on the other side. So right now I got very good price for what I do. Maybe I can increase, we not to more hurt and the guy is gonna go just monitor it. So maybe little more spans. Because I, I've been here, there's some milk in some places around town, they've been destroyed. You know what I mean? There've been new constructions and that get all those animals coming to different neighborhoods. The people not think, but soon you get one of those mills out, they find different penthouse in another place. We no wanna be those penthouse, so I wanna. Getting too much now, huh? Okay, anyway. The lighting for the softball field. It's been a delay for the people because they have some weather wise, stuff like that. The, the killing for us in this outside projects is we, nobody was expected. Two, three days in the week, the dog, the rain and all that stuff, thunderstorms. We've been there very soon. Tomorrow I gonna have a conversation, I already have conversation today with, Peter? Peter Roach?
Boucher.
Ah, Boucher?
Boucher.
Yeah, Boucher. Peter Boucher. And we was looking with Andrew, that's another person that's in the group. And Andrew say, that he is gonna try to get something for tomorrow for us. He is gonna call John, it's kind of like the other person. So I've been getting more information tomorrow to how everything is gonna be addressed for that. They've been said they have some problems in Brown University, which is on stall. That's part of the track, more the track is big. Because the track was supposed to be start by now, but they have some situation. The same company is doing the Brown, Brown or Bryan University, one of those universities with the west, all like that. But they promise they're gonna come next week and they're gonna start something next week. That's the last email I have from the athletic department. I think the only last thing I had to say is for the cleaning suppliers and stuff like that. I've been told they try to no use too much next year. So we've been trying now to accompany call HD. It's a corporation, they work together with Home Depot Corporation. It's a big corporation. We already start getting prices and see what's the best benefits for us to go to that way. Because the other company was, is a giant, not company. But I think this other company can give you all the same thing. If we can get the same product, price wise, we just, this week, Mike from here, Mike Connan.
Powers.
Powers, yeah. He was able to go to the system and make one of the big orders this time. So we wanna see how that goes. It's work in process. You know, come from a company that been here for fifteen, twenty years, try to get another one. It's not that simple because one of the things we had to understand is this. Every building had different paper towels. Every pla, every building had different toilet paper. But the supply for that specific dispenser is exclusive for the vendor. You know what I mean? It's not like I can go and buy, this is Makina, oh, this is an Audi. I can get Bondi and put in there, they not fit, they not. So it has to be. And that company is exclusive to some, that's all. That is one of the things we wanna try to see how. I told to the representative for the cleaning company, the new company, I say, hey, did you can send the, the main company to us? I show how many dispensers I gonna have. If he give me all those for free, I buy the toilet paper for him. Why not? Oh, that's the way they work. I gonna be buy for him a year, how many, maybe five hundred toilet papers. So they gonna pay by itself. He's gonna give me the score of the three percent, three percent by fifty or by five hundred. He's gonna give me the score of the three percent, three percent by fifty or by five hundred. That's sorry, they are not becoming the fourth part, they become in the second part, so it's two points five, ah, good. It's always way to make it happen, so I, a work and process. That's it, thank you for having me here, I enjoy, uh, I may gonna, thanks to everybody, you got any question?
Well, thanks again.
I got special paper for questions.
Good, yeah, no, thank you for being here, obviously, everybody has now met Carlos and, and the enthusiasm he brings. Uh, you know, the idea from my side of it, when we first met Carlos were, there were some concerns with his inspections that he has since talked about, which. You know, it's elevators, it was fire panels, um, it was playgrounds, like, when I heard about those aspects of the school community kind of being lapsed. That's, that's why I kinda wanted to bring Carlos in and at least let the committee hear that they were lapsed in, in the past, but now Carlos knows and on it. So that's kinda part of the readiness that I was wanting to hear tonight amongst just cleaning supplies, lights being on, systems working. So again, we appreciate the comprehensiveness of your report tonight and, and again, it's, it's a matter of just knowing that. Things have been inspected and the safety aspect for all of our staff and students is, is that attention to detail is being attended to, as we would hope. So I'll open up to the committee to, uh, for questions, if there are any, I know it was pretty comprehensive.
Not per se a question, Carlos, so first off, just kudos to you for everything that you've been able to take a look at in three months. Obviously, you've been incredibly busy, so we appreciate your diligence. I love the way you framed it in terms of the customer and talking about not only the student and the staff. I've never had it framed in that way, in terms of like really a service oriented position, and I think that will serve you incredibly well. Uh, I guess just from a school committee standpoint, and it's not a question, but it's just one of our responsibilities is in regards to budget. And one of the things that we need to look at in conjunction with that is the capital plan, and so we would love your insight as we look across the facilities. Over the next few years, where do you think we'll need to make investments? And leverage your expertise in terms of what changes we should be making, what might be coming down the pike. I know you're hitting everything head on now, but we also need to be looking out, and so we will welcome your expertise to help us figure that out.
Yes, I got, might not put in the other side my computer, so. He bring up to my attention, he bring up my attention.
Thanks.
The last meeting that we had, so I've been focusing on that, so it was not for me to bring that at this point.
And not asking for it now, just.
Is there, is there something that I say I'm working on? I already have company looking this building for new lighting, all LEDs and stuff like that, it's work and process. How I can um, solve the problem for the heating, I can get maybe based in my engineering background and the stove, I think I can put it. Uh, another boiler, and the boiler I don't know where they are, no steam, no hot water boiler with a good capacity. Take the heater changers out, use the same pumps and feed out with directly hot water from the boiler. And my savings and gas turns, we call turns and the engineer, and then it's gonna be fantastic. And I can hit this building with just one candle, so it's, it's in my head, it's work and project, process, because.
Thank you.
I, I like say for me, come here, it's fascinating, because every morning I have with something good, something new. And when I leave, I go and I say, wow, what a nice, it was productive. It's not, people say, when I came here the first time, I said, you don't know what you're getting to, I said, hey, they chose me, I'm the lucky one. I only had to say thank you, because I, now I can put my knowledge, right?
That's right, buddy.
In the first one, somebody I was sitting down and. And, and the, waiting for my turn to go inside the room, and he come, hey, my friend, how you doing? I'm doing fine. I don't know. So like it is, why we need to worry about? I got him, approve my stains, you got, you see the people, so I don't need to worry, I don't know, I'm okay.
Good, glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions from the committee? At all, not, nope, yes, Rob.
Nice to meet you, I'm Robyn, I think you're one of the people you haven't met yet, so I just wanna say, I appreciate you talking about preventative maintenance. I think that that's something that is very much needed. And I also just specifically wanna thank you for mentioning the elevators. I know last year both Memorial and Woodland at different times had the elevators down and just. My daughter relies on the elevator at Woodland, so that was very difficult for me when it was down, so I appreciate that.
The one in Willam, I, the inspection was on a month and a half ago.
So I, I very much appreciate that.
It's attached to the emergency generator, everything, it was, in there it's different, Willam is new technology. So it's a lot of sensors, it's not like you get in a Chevy fifty eight that you only see five wires. Now you see a Tesla and you just want the spaghetti, it says, oh, wait, you not even know how it started, you say, open the door.
Well, I appreciate it, and I, I, I very much appreciate how you said you would be ready to call if there's a problem.
Oh, yeah.
The one question I had, and I, again, I am by no means an expert on facilities, but when I think of facilities, I think both of. More the maintenance piece, which you talked in great detail about tonight, and also more the custodial piece. So I was just wondering, from your sense, how has the cleanliness of the buildings been since the opening this year?
Uh, let me put it this way, I know I'm sharp for the clean, that's every uh. Every principal of the school is in charge of the cleaners. I always see them.
Okay.
So the lucky me is I go to the area too much. Because there is where I got my technicians had the shop and all, and when I get here, the area was a little. So I've been going there almost, when I come in, I go every morning to that side, so I get know the people very well.
Okay, good.
Let me put it this way, I'm fascinated how these guys work, they did, they did, I tell you. They need somehow, say like, in this building, it's a lot of square feet for three, three guys, four guys. Before, right, I've been told was five guys or whatever, and one guy goes, so now. For the square feet, we really need to take to see if we can get back to another person, because it's a lot of square feet. Paul, one thing I saw is uh, the way the uh. Focus to get the school ready, uh, was very good, because we had to think of this, it's the summer orientation rooms. So they had to wait for one area to get the, the program finished, so if they go around the whole school. Uh, the last two days, they finish their homework. Right, Hattie?
Mm-hmm.
And I check every classroom and why, it's a bit nice and shiny. It was uh, all the irons and plates, all the desks lined up, blackboard's clean, oh, you have to look. We got, at the second floor in this building, one this one side, we got a lot of leaks on the roof, or we try to. Combine the leaks, say fix the leak, or give us a, for this year we'll be lucky, because I find the leak, I fix it. So now we don't need to spend that many thousand dollars. We can use that money to fix the bathroom, this is a good. No, because that was a good find, the, the leak in, in this area, in the classroom, I. I say honestly, I find the blueprints and that's a candy for me, I. Yeah, here it is, oh, here it is, and I go, there, I was there, it's been fixed, I'm good, I know see all this summer, right? We not got anymore leaks in the same, and look at this place right now, nice and cozy, right?
Nice job.
Nice, nice and comfortable, in this room, right? That's the way it is, so I'm happy to see people are happy, it's solid, it's uh, I, I, there's no worry, I'm okay, so we good?
Any other questions? Not seeing any, we are good, thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting me to here and for having me here, and I couldn't stand, we keep going, I'm happy.
Thanks again, Carlos.
More news.
Thank you.
See you.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, uh, the next agenda item will be uh, superintendent of schools for our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four goals. I think everybody got a copy of uh, of the goals from earlier today, so. Superintendent McDair.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I shared several areas for potential goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In the areas of strategic plan, attendance, facilities assessment, and long range facilities planning, um, and development of the district website. There were also mentions of literacy goals in a couple of other areas from twenty-two, twenty-three. So my goal tonight is I propose gathering some feedback this evening to further tease some of these concepts out. And probably bring proposals back based on the feedback this evening from the school committee at a subsequent meeting. So, you know, where are we going next? I'd say the, the past four years have been pretty chaotic and it feels like we're slowly returning to normal, which is great. Uh, but we've had significant disruptions to all of our students' education. We've also seen, again, the dramatic increases in our student population, which we've talked about earlier in the meeting, continued shifts to our district demographics. Last school year, we saw a return to normal schedules, academic programs, and extracurricular activities. Um, this year, we had a very, very positive start, like the vibe in the schools is very, very positive across the board. And I'm hearing that from teachers as I walk around, um. Which, which I think is great, because it means we're moving more and more towards, towards normal. There are at least four major areas that I plan to focus my attention on during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, again, this list is not exhaustive, but these are clear priorities for the, the upcoming school year and most likely in subsequent school years as well. Again, key priorities include the development of a new strategic plan, improving attendance and decreasing um, chronic absenteeism. Our facilities, which include five buildings and the surrounding grounds, and the development of a new district website. So first, I wanna talk about the strategic plan. So our current strategic plan is coming to a close at the end of the twenty-four school year. And this will require the development of a new plan that builds in our current work, is connected to both our portrait of a graduate and strategic pillars. And meets the needs of our students and families. We expect to receive significant feedback from all of our stakeholders in the development of the next plan, which we did the last time. Excuse me. This will include students, families, staff, community members, school committee members, and our district leadership team. The plan will be aligned to our strategic objectives of growth focused instruction, equity and access, social emotional learning, and continuous learning. The new plan will also be directly connected to our portrait of a graduate, which includes being a responsible community member, an active communicator and collaborator. A creative problem solver and a continuous and lifelong learner. Our school improvement plans have been aligned with both the current strategic plan and the recently developed portrait of a graduate. Additionally, district-wide departments have also aligned their work to these two documents. As a district, and Craig mentioned this earlier, we're also engaging in two large projects this year, which is the meeting the moment, which is reimagining the high school experience. At Milford High School and a district-wide equity audit. And this, these two things are gonna require a lot of feedback from, you know, community members. So potential goal language could be, um, lead the development of the next strategic plan for the Milford Public Schools. Incorporating key feedback from, I'm sorry, incorporating feedback from key stakeholders, multiple district data sources, and working on ongoing initiatives and programs. And again, I, I teased this out with a little more detail, but I think that's just the broad stroke of what I'm proposing. Um, the post pandemic world, in terms of attendance and chronic absenteeism, has seen a number of shifts. Um, it, it's interesting, Carlos kept using the word humans. And, and I think it's important to remember that humans are viewing how they work and learn differently. And this has led to different expectations of how work, school, and socializing occurs. It is well documented that attendance has significantly declined in public schools across the country. Attendance for high need students is particularly concerning. It is important to remember that more than seventy percent of our students currently are categorized as high needs by the state of Massachusetts. Focusing on school attendance is critical, because attending school regularly allows students to acquire knowledge and skills across various subjects. It provides our students with opportunities to learn from teachers, interact with peers, participate in discussions, and engage in hand-on, hands-on activities. Consistent attendance helps students keep up with the curriculum, understand complex concepts, and develop a solid, solid foundation for future learning. Consistent attendance is also critical for academic achievement and long-term academic outcomes, social development. Instilling a sense of self-discipline and personal responsibility, and providing access to opportunities and future prospects. It's also required by law, um, and provides continuity of learning. Now, it's interesting, I'm gonna pass out a document, Craig, Craig alluded to this earlier, um, in the meeting as well. We've received accountability data that we're starting to sift through from the state, and it's not all available and. We can't disaggregate it in ways that we really want to yet and compare it to the state and surrounding districts and like districts and all the things we typically do. But this past year, we exceeded all our targets for non-high school students for reducing chronic absenteeism per the state. And met the overall target at the high school level. So this is welcome news that the chronic attendance numbers are declining, because we, we put a great deal of time and effort in this area as a district. And our tenant supervisors have been working tirelessly um, on this, since we hired them. Last year's numbers were still well above the overall district percentage of sixteen point five for two thousand twenty, kind of pre-pandemic, um, for most of the year. Um, but further reducing this numbers will again require continued focused attention and a number of different strategies and supports. I'm gonna just hand out the data, because I think it's just, it's, it's, it's good news and it's interesting, so Christine, you wanna take? But we can't do anything with a student if they don't walk through the doors, or they don't walk through the doors consistently. And I know you've seen, you know, Josh, I think people have had high school students who had the opportunity to see Josh do a presentation correlating the students' attendance with GPA. Um, and I think that happens throughout the district, if you're, if you're there. You tend to do, you tend to do well, if you, if you don't show up, you tend to struggle. Um, so the potential language I'm proposing is reduce. Reduce the number of students who are chronically absent from school through direct intervention by our tenant supervisors and school-based teams. Overcoming, looking to overcome barriers to chronic absenteeism, partnering with the court system and social service agency. And supporting school environments that are welcome for all students. So facilities assessment and the development of the next long range facilities plan. I think Carlos talked facilities to death, so I'm gonna cut right to the chase on this one. Um, work collaboratively with our district facilities team and the long range facilities planning subcommittee of the school committee to develop the next long range facilities plan for the Milford Public School District. Um, we had a plan in place right after Woodland was, was finished, it's probably time to revisit that. Obviously, um, if we're not accepted at the SBA program for the high school, we'll be submitting, you know, a successor proposal. Development of the district website. Um, our website requires an update and an overhaul, my hope is to start, which, which we have the process this summer. We've, um, the, the company that ran our website and our um, communication system was bought out by another, a larger company. And so, um, it's, and it's, the timing actually was very good, because they offered as part of kind of resigning with the company, kind of the we've, we've been part of. A like website development support for free, basically. And I thought it would cost us somewhere between thirty-five and maybe a hundred thousand dollars, so. Um, we're starting a committee, which um, I've asked our tech, two tech kind of representatives to participate from the school committee, and we have some folks across the district. And um, I think next week we'll start a schedule for getting those meetings up and running and kind of starting that program and working with, working with the company. And obviously Nancy and her team are gonna be very involved in the process as well. The goal too is, is, is just for the development of an outstanding website, which is essential for effective communication, engagement, and accessibility for students, parents, teachers, and the broader community. An effective Milford Public Schools district website provides clear navigation, a sleek, user-friendly design, up-to-date information, accessible content. And important information for our stakeholders. And again, a district-wide team will work with our vendor to develop a new website that will better meet our needs, that's really the goal. Um, and I, and I'd like to uh, like work with some of our folks at the high school, who are maybe in the photography department and, and kind of have them kind of engage in that work. And we've, we've got great pictures across, but I think some of the kids who were elementary students at the time of the pictures might be in middle school or high school at this point, so it'd be good to get updated photos. Um, the, the goal language potentially is develop a um, new website for the Milford Public Schools that provides clear and accessible information for all members of the school community. And again, there's, there'll be backup information if these are, if these are the goals that feel like they're the right way to go for the committee. Um, again, open to feedback, other areas you'd like to see me focus on for goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The one thing I would say is, um, the more goals that I have, the less focus I can provide on any one goal. And it's important to also note that my work is well beyond any goals I put forward for the school committee. There's a lot of different things that, that we're doing that, that aren't representative from the goals and. Like I think the adult ESL is one thing that, you know, is a project that kind of finally came to fruition, there's a lot of those things. We did, I think I said this previously, we did a kind of a presentation slash engagement with our leadership team. And what was the total number of initiatives we were working on district-wide? Was it sixty-something?
Yeah.
It was like sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, of things that just don't deal with like day-to-day teaching and learning. It was like sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three of things that just don't deal with like day-to-day teaching and learning that are going on across the district. Um, and so that work is happening regardless of what the goals are and will happen regardless of what the goals are. So open to questions and feedback.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Yes, yeah, one thing quickly is of, of those goals and where they're going to fall into, um, the, you know, the, whether they're a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, a district improvement goal, and then they're the performance standards. So trying to, I think those are going to be important to hit those categories, you know, as, as a look at kind of the, the end of the year summative that we, that we utilize. I think where there was one portion that we missed, I think that you brought to my attention, Robin, right? That it was one of the, maybe the performance standards that we didn't quite get. So I think.
You have the three types of goals, I think we don't really cover two of the phase.
Yeah, so I think, you know, as we look at kind of what that outline is, at least to get one or two goals within each one of those aspects, right? I think would be important. Anyways, open up the questions or any other goals or comments that people want to, uh, address. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, well, just in support of a couple, I would say, uh, number one, this is, this data on absenteeism is promising. It's especially, as you said, the, the non-high school level. Those are big drops, which is, which is a good sign. So I'm, I, I like that that's still on there and that's going to be a continued focus. And it's good that we finally have some data that, that shows just what their hard work's been doing. Because up until then, it's just been, they're tackling this massive monster that no one can really see. And this is showing their impact, which is.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I would say, you know, the attendance, and I shared this with Dale and Victor today too, and they were very pleased, obviously. And I think they've been doing incredible work. But it's also, you know, and, and they would be the first ones to acknowledge this too. It's, it's going to take a team-wide effort. It's, you know, our counseling staff, it's our social workers, it's our administrators, the central office, um, all kind of working together. And we, we had a meeting the other day just talking about, like, attendance is one of the topics, or one of our leadership meeting pieces. And, you know, there's, it was a lot of rich conversation, and there's layers and layers and layers to this. Um, and there's, there's always a story behind every student who's chronically absent. And it's, you know, getting to that, getting to the, like, what's, what's blocking them from coming to school? What's, what's the barrier? What are the challenges? How can we kind of reduce some of these things to support, um, you know, better school attendance? And, um, you know, I think everybody is committed to it. It's, again, I think you're not going to see, like, we're not going to go to zero to seventy. But I think that, I think the percentages we saw this year in particular at the elementary level. And, and I would say we kind of focused on that area because we felt like the impact long-term could be greater if we really focused on getting more of our elementary students on track, you know, from a long-term perspective. Um, so we're going to keep at it.
I think, I think this is a goal we're probably going to see for multiple years because this is a, this is a long-term battle.
Yeah.
Right, and then, and who knows what we use it year after year. But so that's, that's a good, uh, a very good goal that I like seeing on there. And then facilities one too, um, I like the change on this one a little more from just submitting MSBA to, we have to have the bigger, bigger picture discussion now because, I want to know, we've mentioned this in meetings a couple of times last or two. At some point, we're going to have to have a discussion on what happens if MSBA doesn't come through. And how do we position these buildings, even if it does come through, to survive up until a new high school? We can move space around. So, um, it's very important that that focus sits on all buildings, not just the high school, but maintaining Woodland and keeping that going, and Memorial and their lack of air conditioning. And, you know, especially with, who knows how many more hot days we're going to end up with in the summer a, as we move on. So I think that that overall picture of all of our properties and how we, we keep those going is, um, is very important too.
And we'll have to see because, I, you know, Carlos brings a level of expertise where we may not have to go, um, you know, with an engineering background. We may not have to go out, we used the, uh, Nesdaq the last time we did like a long-range facility study. And we may decide like, hey, we really want to bring in like an objective third party to like review the stuff. But we may also say, hey, we've got some good baseline information from the last study, and we've got a different kind of team in place. Maybe we can kind of do it in-house. That's something I think the subcommittee will talk about.
Yeah, definitely. Um, outside of that, I, I personally think I need a little bit more time to try to, I think, over other things that, um, we may want as goals or may want to suggest as goals on top of this. But I would agree, obviously, you don't want to pile too much on because it's not like you're, uh, looking for things to do right now, so.
That is a true fact.
Thank you, Matt. Robin?
So I think for me, overall, when I'm looking at the goals, you know, part of it, I think, obviously, it's a collective effort to help with the goals. My biggest question, now, I do also want you to have ownership over the things that you want to improve on over the next year. My biggest question is, next summer, how are we going to know that you were successful? And so just really thinking and being more mindful about how we will measure success. So when I'm looking at the goal language now, I, just by the way the goals are written, I don't necessarily know how we're going to measure success. So for example, um, you know, going through having a long range, so is it just enough to put any long-range facilities plan in place and say the goal's achieved? Or are there certain criteria that we expect to know that it was successful in its development? Looking at the website one, knowing that it's clear and accessible, who is going to rate the accessibility? Are we going to have feedback from, you know, parents, different focus, like, looking at the website and rating it? So these are just the things I'm thinking of. Um, one question I have that you plan to answer tonight, how is chronic absenteeism defined?
So it's, um, there's two definitions now. It's, um, it's student, the old definition was ten percent or more, um, so basically eighteen days or more being absent. There's a twenty percent group now. Uh, so that's thirty-six days, basically.
So I think for me, again, you know, I don't necessarily want to say it has, I would just want that definition involved. So we know, like, when we're saying chronic absenteeism, what we mean. And then when I'm looking at the chronic absenteeism for the high school, if a student drops out, are they included in these numbers?
No, once, once a student, like, and this is why, like, September and October are still important. Um, I forget the date, Craig, is it October, like, seventh or thirtieth? I, that, that the Sims date is.
The Sims?
It's sometime in October.
I thought it was October first.
Might be October first. But there's a date where we have to basically submit, like, these are the students that are enrolled. And, um, you know, anybody who hasn't attended, like, we pull them off the rolls, maybe before that, maybe a little after that. Um, there might be a reason why somebody hasn't attended. But that kind of establishes like our initial student population, and then it changes obviously every single day.
Yeah.
Um, I forget the point I was trying to make.
But just thinking about the dropouts as opposed to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so if someone drops out, once they're officially, like, dropped out of school, then they're no longer attending. So they no longer count against your attendance.
I mean, I think that that's a factor, right? If we're taking a chronic absentee student at the high school, if the numbers are improving, but we're having more students drop out, I, I think that we need to disclose that data as part of this goal, in my opinion.
So one of our challenges really is we have such a mobile population that, and, and kids come and go. Even like the same kid will attend for a few months, move somewhere, attend for a few months after. And that's been the, the most challenging management aspect of the data because when is a student not a student? And that's what we've always kind of, you know, that's what we're always kind of like going back and forth about.
So I guess that's just my, my two cents. I mean, I can't think of how it will lay out. And then the last thing I'll say is that when we're talking just with the different, you know, curriculum leaders, it seems like last year, really, the push was math, and last year of math, and this year the push is more literacy. And so for that, I think it would be logical to include some type of goal around literacy, though I realize, you know, we need to prioritize what we're going to prioritize. So those are my thoughts at least.
Yeah, and, and I would say too, literacy is going to happen, whether it's one of my goals or not too. So, I mean, you know, that's going to be, that's more of a professional development focus across the district. So always keep that in mind. There's always going to be a lot of things happening that don't fall within the purview of like however many goals we decide on.
Awesome.
Yes. Yeah, um, Kevin, I think these are great goals, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts already on it. Um, one thing that I just have, and I don't know if it's goal-worthy or, you know, I mean, these are kind of actually big goals for you, for you. Um, but one of the thoughts that, or one of the things I've been reading about and listening to is, uh, the loss of learning from COVID. There's some districts, and there's a professor at Harvard that's actually graded certain districts. Um, they've lost, as is estimated, about a hundred and eighty days to two hundred and seventy actual days of school. So, um, I, I know we can't make those up per se, but, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned about are the students who've missed out on those very valuable, you know, learning experiences from COVID. And how do we, you know, make up for that while they're still under our supervision? Again, and it may not be a goal for this year, maybe something else that's working in the background, but just a thought.
And, and I think we're doing that in a lot of different, a lot of different ways. Um. It's, no, it's, and maybe we can even just talk about some of the things we're doing, and maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah. It may not necessarily be like, I mean, it may not be goal-worthy, but something that I've been more aware of and interested in over here.
No, and I think it's the biggest challenge everybody in education is facing is we've got this kind of, you know, these couple of years that for some students were lost years, not for all students, but some students that were lost years. And, um, and just a changing landscape about how people are just engaging with everything, education being one of those things. And, and how are we trying to balance, like, you know, getting kids to come consistently just at the school day? And also, like, you know, all these programs that we've got in place to support maybe different targeted groups of students for different reasons.
Yeah.
Like Tony Chinapi was talking about, you know, our program around, and it's been very successful around, you know, first-generation college students and connecting with somebody who's maybe navigated some folks through the college process a couple of times and can be a real support. It's just one example of, of many. Like, we've got a new literacy program coming in, it was a second grade, Craig? It's going to be like tutoring, one-to-one tutoring via the internet with, with students that, you know, has been, you know, obviously tested and research-based, but, you know, there's a lot of things we're, we're, we're putting into place that, you know, the reimagining the high school piece, you know, we're trying to make it, how can we make it more engaging, more welcoming, more supportive? Where kids have like authentic connections and have, and are engaging in activities that they're excited about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Kind of building off Robin's comment heading around, you know, more of the smart measurable goals. Clearly, the strategic plan, you know, is such a core foundation of, you know, who we are and what we, what we're doing. Can you talk to me a little bit about how you think about the existing plan and assessing success? Like, I, I was just looking, so there's, we have an item on there to, on there currently, right? And so it's under growth-focused instruction. Develop a district-wide model by analyzing data. Has that been achieved? So I'm just curious, like, how you look at the current.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're doing, like, just, if you want me to answer that specific question, that's just.
That one jumped out to me because that's not something I think that we've talked about, so maybe we should.
Yeah, I, I think we're doing it in a, in a lot of different ways. I don't think there's one way we're doing it because I think there's a lot of ways to look at data.
Is there a model?
Um, I wouldn't say there's one, I, I wouldn't say there's one model, and I think that language was probably overly simple.
Okay.
And probably slash ambitious. Because like, we've got, you know, a group of our administrators going through a Harvard DataWise program to really look at data from a few different angles. We've got this new, with, with this program in place, Open Architects, where it's, it's, it's able to pull data in, in, in ways that I think becomes more manageable for the end user. So, I, I, like, I think Dale and Victor is a great example. Like, they can pull attendance data, prioritize kids through different, um, filters, and, you know, really kind of engage in a way that they couldn't before just using our X2 system or, or some of the other programs we've got in place. Um, I think, you know, we're starting to, I don't think we're there yet, but the use of like the iReady data and how is that impacting instruction?
I guess that's where, in my mind, like, taking it from the theory to the practice.
Yeah.
And informing us and showing us how we're using data because.
But those are just a few that just pop off.
No, no, and I, I appreciate that. But I think, as I said, as a school committee member, like, I would appreciate more data to understand how we're doing that. And so I was just curious, as we think about a new plan, how do you assess where we are with the current plan as you look to evolve?
Yeah, and I think our plan, like, I just spit across the table. I think our strategic plans are, um, have gotten better each time. Because I think before, like, when I was here very early on, I think even as assistant superintendent, I was very involved in the process. I think we were more like broad language. And, and it's, and it's getting more focused. And I think the, the other real benefit of the strategic plan, more than the specific outcome, is the alignment with the schools and the programs. Because I think we're starting to see more, like, the schools are tying everything to the bigger picture. That's really what we want, and I think that's really improved over time.
I agree with that, Kevin, except I disagree, I think the outcome is just as important.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, but I think we're seeing, I think we're seeing some of that too.
Okay.
And, and I, and I think there's, there's, I think you got to look at the data, like, the learning data, I think through a few nuanced lenses too, just based on a variety of variables.
And I don't look at any of these and say, oh, they're, they would ever be done, right? Like, you're never checking the box, I completely understand that. I'm just more curious, as we think about moving to a new plan, how we think about what we have accomplished, what still needs to be done, and how that gets included. So just in regards to that goal, I think that would be important. I guess the other goal that I would be really curious to see you just, I'd be curious to throw for the committee to see what they think as well is like, as I think about you at the helm of our district, I think the professional culture piece that you bring is probably one of the most important kind of leadership opportunities that you bring to the district. So I would just encourage you to think about something more specific around that in terms of, you know, consistent and rigorous instruction, culture, staff. You know, I think one thing that I've asked for in the past, which we've never included, is like, we evaluate you, and there's, you know, a few of us at the table, but you oversee a lot of individuals, and I would love to incorporate some sort of surveying, some sort of feedback. I think we're put in a challenging position when we only have kind of one side of the table. I would love for us to be able to incorporate information from others as part of this process. So I would love for us to consider that this year. Thank you.
I'm looking over at my page.
It's cheating.
Yeah. Um, so thank you, yeah, same, just to, to go off of what Megan was saying, same, you know, when I look at the org chart, and yeah, there are so many different, you know, um, kind of departments. And I think, yeah, we've had some offline conversations or executive session conversations about, you know, the evaluation process. And, and how can, how can we as a committee know how well these different departments are being run, right? You know, Carlos is a perfect example. It's a, it's a new face that has come in and has found a lot of inefficiencies in how that department was run. I'm not saying other departments are being run inefficiently, but it would be nice to get some type of feedback to our committee. And I know we are, we have, you know, the, the different departments do come in and give presentations. But again, it's that assessment from the superintendent that I think that we need to have, right? So that we, we can have a little better understanding of where the departments are and where they're going, right? And, you know, and I look at it this from a, you know, you, when, how often are you meeting with department heads and principals? What are those agendas? Uh, what are the directives showing your leadership there? And, and the, and against the, again, the educational pathways, right? So it's all of that, what you're saying, and the evaluations part. And how do you, as the superintendent, integrate into these departments and show that leadership? I would say. Um, and again, going off of what Robin had from the literacy part of it, I think that's going to be, I think it's an important goal. I think it's what we, what we saw in math last year, and it was a successful goal. But we heard that literacy was, was, was lapsed, uh, or lacking. You know, I think that's going to be, uh, an important focus, um, and I think it's going to be an important goal. And again, the, you know, I certainly agree with the other goals that are on there, um, but those are some of my thoughts.
Just, uh, after that discussion, I know I said that I was thinking more of what else we added. And I think that Megan and Chris, and even similar to Robin's, I kind of captured more of what I was thinking without really knowing how to say it, especially the piece, um, Megan, that you just shared. And I think that that's a really big, I think that'd be a really big goal, and there'll probably be a lot of work that would have to go into showing all those aspects. So on my side, if a goal like the website was to come off to free up some space, I mean, that seems like one of those goals that's probably going to happen either way.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Right, so if that, if, if pulling something like that off, um, I don't know how everybody else would have taken that one off and putting something more along the lines of what you were saying, Megan, on there is, I think, kind of where I'm, where I'm leaning. Um, but the wording that you shared was, was pretty spot on with what I was, I was thinking.
We're aligned, man.
Thank you for putting that out there so clearly because I wasn't going to get there.
And I think I, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, so why, why don't, well, why don't I take this feedback, bring it back in either the next meeting or the meeting after? I guess see what's on the agenda because I don't want to. Um, and then just kind of say like, hey, this is what I heard. And I'll, and I'll actually provide like, like, a little more how I do typically with like some of the activities, some of the, you know, connected to some of the standards. Um, and then, you know, just get one more round of feedback and then come back with a final version.
I think that's perfect, Kevin, if we could just get it like a day or two in advance.
Yeah.
It's just a sample to have a chance to.
Yeah, yeah, my, my goal here was more to just say, hey, these are the general areas I'm thinking about. Um, but I can provide that when we provide the packet and that's that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and that's what we typically do if I was doing a final.
Just to straighten mine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that, Megan. Yeah, and I think I'd rather see, you know, in a sense, a, an abundance of goals, and it's easier to get rid of those goals and just instead of prioritize, like you just said, right? Where, okay, the website, we know that it's going to be working on the background, it's not necessarily something that needs to be a goal, so we can pull that off the list. But if we have a comprehensive list in front of us, and then we can, again, we can prioritize it and then come up with those core goals and, and ensuring that we're hitting these, uh, performance standards. Great. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right.
That's it.
Moving on then from, to our assistant superintendent, you've got three minutes.
Okay, sir. I'll take a minute on each.
Item.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, so iReady pro, uh, protocols and procedures, uh, we have iReady, uh, in math and, uh, yeah, uh, reading. Right now going on in all schools, one through eight. Um, I think Stacy finished up last week with math and are doing some, um, doing their reading this week. And I think um, the other schools started up this week with um, with reading. Uh, what's gonna be new this year is we are sending the um, family reports home after each time the kids take it. Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I think it's.
I'm sorry.
No, I I think, I think it's important, I think um, parents should be aware of how their students are, how their kids are doing after each. Um, I also think that um, if there's questions, um, teachers can answer that. But then you can also see the growth that a kid makes from, um, you know, this fall, the fall administration to the winter to the the spring. Um, and if there isn't growth, then we can put some um, put some things in place to make sure that we are. Um, so, we're excited about that, it's uh, the parent report should be sent home right around uh, the first week of October. Um, so obviously, we gotta wait till um, all of the, all the tests are done. Uh, and then Carrie, Carol and I are gonna print them all and get them into the teachers, um, and send them home. So expect that, uh, hopefully you got some, hopefully um, parents got some um. Communication from their t- uh, their children's teachers this week or last week that says that uh, iReady was happening. So hopefully that happened, I, we sent something out earlier, um, that I think outlined all the different things that we're doing. Um, I don't know if anybody has questions about iReady. Go ahead.
Sorry, would the elementary tutors be leveraging that information in any way when they're going to this one on one tutoring or?
Yes, so that's part of what they're gonna look at, but they also do their own diagnostic testing.
Okay.
Um, and just to clarify, we have two hundred and seventy seats, so two hundred and seventy kids, fifteen minutes a day.
That's right.
Are gonna be one on one with tutors, so.
And then just logistically, Craig, I, as a parent, I have absolutely no preference, but it's pretty easy also just to send a PDF via talking points. I don't know if logistically and cost wise, if that's, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, um.
No preference.
We've, we've just, I think the same could be said about report cards too, but um, I think. For equity, I think uh, we we print them and send them home. Um, all right, any, any other questions? Okay, uh, Open Saiad. Uh, we have, we currently are running Open Saiad uh, for the third year at, I believe it's the third, yeah, it's the third year at Stacy. Um, Open Saiad uh, is a, the science model, we're obviously running it in the science classrooms at Stacy. Um, the, the MCAS is aligned to the kinds of questions that are asked in in Open Saiad. It's more of a performance based assessment uh, now, the new MCAS, new science MCAS. Um, we, we wrote a grant to apply for a pilot at uh, Open Saiad in three to five. Our fifth grade teachers, all four fifth grade teachers are involved in it. We also have um, I think, three, four teachers, four teachers in fourth grade. And I think now we have two teachers in third grade. Um, they went to a summer training, the teachers that are involved, and we got all the materials for running two different units. Um, the. Early feedback from the teachers, fifth grade teachers seem, seemingly like it. And I think it's set up for a model where the fifth grade teacher, a model like a middle school or a fifth grade. Where there's a dedicated sixty, forty-five to sixty minutes every single day of science. Third and fourth grade, um, just from, just from what they got, the, the summer institute. And planning to run these lessons, they're feeling a little more constrained by the way the schedule is. And trying to fit in the amount of math that we want them to fit in, and the amount of literacy that we want them to fit in. And now to try to run Open Saiad, they're seeing some problems with it, so hopefully we can help them work it through. Um, they do meet with a coach from um, Boston College, uh, I believe it's monthly. Uh, but they do have access as often as they need. Um, and they're also working with teachers that are also involved in the pilot from across um, the state. Uh, so this is, this is gonna be part of the work that we're doing um, in science generally. Uh, in science this year, actually, science STEM, high school, practical arts and health. We're in the phase one of our um, curriculum review cycle. So basically, it's taking a um, uh, a deep dive or a study into what's happening in all of our courses across the district. And then making recommendations, so by the end of the year, we'll have some recommendations for um, for science um, programming. And STEM programming. Um, I I don't know if you've heard, but the new health standards have come out. So obviously trying to get the health teachers together and figure out how we can integrate the new standards into what they're doing. Um. And then also trying to figure out how we can integrate health standards into um, fifth grade and below. Uh, because there are standards for that, and currently we don't have health teachers. Uh, so that's our Open Saiad pilot, any questions about that? All right, and then finally, our MCIA performance uh, performance task pilot. Um, those of you that have been here for a number of years know that we are, have a partnership or we're involved in the consortium of MCIA. Um, this year, our middle school has joined a pilot to try to, I guess, make proof of concept. And we're gonna, we are involved in this, it's a two year pilot. Uh, we're gonna be running three performance assessments by the end of the two years, I'm not sure if we'll get to it this year in all three subjects. But in science, uh, math and literacy, we're gonna be running performance um, assessments. Three times a year and creating um, portfolios to sort of look at this, uh, a student's body of work over a year. And determine whether or not they've um, made progress. So again, which we're, the intent is to build a system that could potentially take the place of MCAS. Where kids wouldn't have to sit for one exam and be judged solely on that one assessment, but more a body of work over the year. We can show growth that way and show that kids are meeting standards. So um, we're doing it, all teachers in math, all um, reading and English teachers. And actually, social studies is picking up some of those standards too, um, and then the science teachers over at Stacy. So, um, a lot happening over there and um, Dan Cody and Alyssa Holland are leading the charge. As well as Sherry Peterson, leading the charge over there, um, in conjunction with Carrie, that's so, it's all good work.
Any questions about that? All right. So, thank you very much for those updates, we really appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, moving on then to uh, our, usually typically the report from our assistant superintendent for business human resources in her absence.
Want me to move with seats?
To you, if you feel like you need to, you can, you know, you stretch your legs, so, but go ahead.
Um, all right, so in front of you, you have five warrants, uh, hold on, let me find this. Yeah, five warrants that requires a vote, and the total of the warrants is six hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred thirty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Looking for a motion to approve the warrant, motion by Brendan, second by Robin, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent.
All right, um, you have a personnel update in your packet. Um, we have a, we have to vote on the technology surplus. I believe it was Mr. Achilles who asked for a breakdown of the miscellaneous, one hundred and eighty miscellaneous items. Which has been broken out in your packet, uh, twelve projectors, five servers, two Chromebook carts, a hundred access points. Sixty document cameras, one switch and five PCs.
No concerns, um, minor thing, probably doesn't matter that much, but that total actually gets one eighty-five. It's not one eighty-eight.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't, I don't know that it matters, um, but uh, yeah, everything in there is uh, useless if it's old, so that makes sense to me.
I understand.
So this does require a, a vote? So looking for a motion to uh, approve the uh, retirement and taking offline of the uh, technology surplus. Motion by Megan, second by Matt, all in favor, that is unanimous.
Um, all right, there's an out of state field trip request that's in your packet. It is a trip to.
Montreal.
Montreal, um, that's June seventh to June tenth. It's going to be led by uh, Holly Davern and Brian Schuman, who are the seventh and eighth grade French teachers. Uh, and the Stacy French Club advisors.
Because this is out of state, it does require a vote, so any questions?
And this has been a trip, if you don't mind me jumping in, they've done historically, pre pandemic, and we're just bringing it back into the fold.
Excellent, nice to know. So looking for a motion to approve the out of state request, motion by Brendan, second by Megan, all in favor, and that is also unanimous.
And then there's the vote for gifts.
We have no gifts tonight, so we're all good.
Okay.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Craig was happy to hear that.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't have them.
Subcommittee updates, anything on the side? Robin.
So the policy subcommittee met tonight, um, we started reviewing school safety, security and emergency planning policies. And so we started making um, some suggestions for edits before we bring them to the full committee. We want to talk to more um, people in the community, the police department, fire department, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you for that. Any other subcommittee you want, do you want, Carlos kind of hit on Brookside, I guess, do we want to hit on that a little bit more? We have, I guess, I would say we have a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock.
Yeah.
For a more comprehensive or another updated call.
Yeah, so the only thing I think I would add to that is obviously we're, we're waiting on a lot of the little things, I think, at this point. Um, along with the outside cleanup and and the overall goal that we discussed, I believe, last time was that. Um, we're gonna wait to give the green light to Brookside to put students in those classrooms until the contractors are one hundred percent gone forever. Um, so that includes cleanup outside and all that other stuff, so there's more to go. The furniture piece obviously is still part, right?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna coordinate that piece, which is kind of critical.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple more coordination pieces in there, so I think that obviously, as Carlos said, like, it's delayed, it is what it is, there's patience involved. We're getting close, I think, we're getting pretty close to being done, but uh, there's still some stuff, so hopefully we have more tomorrow.
We're, you know, we're, we're seeing progress, like everybody out there, we're, we're a little bit disappointed and frustrated. But again, the, they are checking off, you know, tasks that need to be done, but there are still tasks that still need to be done. So um, again, you know, the outside site work and and just connections of, of um, certain, you know, systems. So we're hoping that all gets, you know, moves through with uh, as few hiccups as possible and that it happens in a timeless. You know, uh, I know our, our building commissioner has been in touch with and working really close with the general contractor. From our side of it, we're more in touch with or only in touch with the sales guy. So um, you know, I think that uh, knowing that John is overseeing it is very helpful. And we, you know, it helps us with knowing some of the timelines, so, yes.
Were you talking about sending them a letter?
We did.
In progress.
Can we just be CC'd on that, Matt?
Absolutely.
Yeah, 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 definitely. All right, any other subcommittee updates, not seeing any uh, future agenda items, anything on, add to the list, yes, Megan?
I just have one, and Craig, it might be like kind of far in the future, but the next time maybe Carrie comes, or maybe it's just an update that you would do. As you were talking about, kind of going through the updates you had tonight, I feel like we have a lot of updates in math, in terms of the additional time on math at Woodland. The new Stacy math block, like, I would love to just do a comprehensive, like, what we've been able to adopt, adopt this year. And maybe it's at the end of the year where you're kind of concluding on how it went, but I think it'd be really informative to just give the committee a broader update in terms of. The progress we've made specifically on time on math and the, the programs we've implemented.
We can probably work it into um, MCAS.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks.
Robin.
I just had a couple of really brief things from things that we talked about the end of the year. So kind of similar to what Meg was saying, I actually was hoping, I don't know if this would be Tim or Carol. But just kind of an update on how the new fifth grade schedule is going at Woodland, um, combining the ELA and social studies into a humanities class. Just a little bit of an update on that. And then the other thing um, was just hearing from the ELL department, I know we added an administrator to that department this year. So just how are things going, what are, you know, the numbers of the students are servicing, I think that that would just be really nice to have an update from them.
So that will be doing annual update on, so I would just roll that into Jen's, again, annual update, I'm not sure when she comes, but we have a calendar kind of setup for her. And she could probably, if that works for you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would be interesting, just if it's like the very end of the year, it'd be nice to book it up a little bit, but.
She usually, she usually comes, I would say late fall, early winter.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we typically do, I mean, sometimes it's depending on people's schedules and things. It might be worth bringing her, bringing the, the new person in, just so you can see.
Yeah, that would be, just because it is another administrator, I think that would be nice.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And uh, next meeting, I believe, we're bringing um, the instructional coaches, sort of give us a rundown of uh, what they're up to, what they've been up to.
Cause I know the others, uh, there's a lot of business we're, we're trying to get to. Um, yeah, just from my side, but just so everybody else is aware, uh, we met with community use, um, so they're gonna, I want them to come in. Um, I'll save the update for, for that time, but you, you know, a community use update, um, you know, obviously looking at our transportation. So sometimes when community uses come in, it's easy to do transportation then. Um, you know, we'll go back over the organizational chart, I know there was a lot of questions there. Um, also the capital plan review, you know, we had moved forward with it, but there was still some questions. Um, the facility, the facility subcommittee has some work to do. Um, also I talked about a uh, a spending policy and that development, uh, and fundraising policy. Um, I'm gonna bring the fundraising in for everybody to hear, because it, it originally was in with the subcommittee. And I think there was a lost, a little lost in translation, there is a new policy subcommittee. So again, let's just get all eyes and ears in the room and we'll, we'll talk through that, I think would be a good thing. Um.
Mr. Allen was particularly helpful on that front.
Exactly, yep, yeah, definitely on the list. Um, and with the new teacher's contract, there's some, kind of some new committees and new alignments. So we'll go over kind of it, some new um, new assignments overall. And I think, and then, yeah, so literacy update, NEAs update, IT steering, IT steering, walking routes, graduation impact. Air quality discussions, these are all for future stuff, so they're on the list.
It's a list.
It's a lot of stuff, but that's why I just wanted to, for everybody to know, um, you know, that I appreciate everybody, you know, we're compiling this list. This, we got a lot, a lot of business to go and, you know, two and a half hours later tonight, so we appreciate everybody's attention. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Matt, second by Robin, then all in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you, and have a good night.